Subscribe to WROK on YouTube and never miss a meeting.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the August 22 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Mayor Protem Macy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can stand, I ask that you do so, please.
It's happening. Fall sports practice has started at the high school. Back-to-school sales and new student orientations and breathless waiting for the class lists and schedules to be posted. It feels like summer break just started, but then I look at the sleep-creased, tanned faces of my children as they roll out of bed at 9:00 a.m., and I realize we somehow got to the end already. Seeing pictures of friends dropping their young adults off for the first year of college makes me want to cling to these days, these brief moments in time even more. So hear me out, summer's not over yet. Let's resolve to enjoy every last moment. Too quickly the wheel turns to the next season of the year and the next season of our lives. Before this one ends, I challenge you to reconnect with your friends and loved ones and soak up the warm weather before the leaves fall. You could play ping pong in Centennial Commons, or walk and talk through Ten Hey Woods, or enjoy coffee on the library steps, or pick up Michigan ground fruits and vegetables at the farmer's market, or dine and drink on an outdoor patio, or organize a neighborhood kickball game at your closest park, as my friends do. Or don't forget, we have movie night on the Hill at Normandy Oaks coming up in September. Summer is waning, but the magic isn't gone yet. We can all use a renewal, and opportunities abound. So one last reminder before back to school: Find your summer joy.
(Pleasure) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Macy. That brings us to item four on tonight's agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda that's in front of us? Commissioner Macy here. Commissioner Perusch? Commissioner Perusch makes the motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, a discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda for this evening. All right, this brings us to the ever-exciting public comment. Portion of our meeting, just a few quick instructions for those who may be newcomers. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the body as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to tonight's public comment, there will be one public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment Public Hearing, North End Tap Room LLC, purchase of new Class C license, approval of new plan of operation and entertainment agreement, you may wait until that time at which the public hearing is opened, and you can comment at that time with the same rules as this public comment. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or at the hearing, please wait until recognized by me, Mayor Fournier. Come up to the podium. For the record, we will ask you to state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic, with the exception of public hearing where you may rise to speak once those are open. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no worries, you can always email us, find us in the grocery store, knock on our doors, well, maybe not that one, and bring your issues up. And please note that the City Commission typically doesn't respond directly to questions during public comment, however, we are taking notes, and when that agenda topic is discussed, we'll ask that question on your behalf. If your public comment is not related to anything on the agenda, the City Manager is also taking notes and follows up accordingly with those issues. So with that, who's first? Mr. Karlowsky, come on in. Oh, sorry.
Rick Karlowsky, 419 Virginia, I'm here on item 10. I watched the commission meeting last time this ice rink issue was brought up. Frankly, I'm a little bit flabbergasted that it's gotten this far. Your staff has said it was a terrible idea and puts the city a great deal of financial liability. That was the first red flag. Second of all, Mr. Witz came here, he's currently got a contract, as far as I know, to provide a skating rink to this city during winter blast, which, the cost of which is coming out of his domain and all the operating expenses. He wants to change the agreement to make all the costs coming out of the city liable for it and get a management fee for this new ice rink. That should have been the second term. Third, I mean, because if this thing was such a slam dunk, where this, we can't lose money on it, this is a go-for-it, trust me, he would be here just asking for use of the park. He'd take care of everything else. It should be an obvious, big red flag that he's coming before this commission looking to take care, for you guys to take care of all the cash. Thirdly, here we are, you guys just put a Parks Village on the ballot because you're running short of cash flow, and you're going to sign up potentially, this city for $200,000 in possible liability for this ice rink? Are you crazy? I mean, if you guys have a cash flow thing, what are we doing here? If this guy wants to bring in an ice rink, fine, have him pay for it, look at the damage to the grass and figure out what you need to do. For any of these proposals to come out where the city has had a punch of liability of hundreds of thousands of dollars should have been shot down the first time, and hopefully it will shot down this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karlowsky. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and greetings to all the commission and Mr. Mayor. My name is Nancy Simpson. I live at 1003 West Webster, right on the corner of Maray and Maray Park, or sometimes called Bicycle Hill. It's a beautiful little block. I'm a 17-year resident on this block, and this is the second time in over 40 years that I've lived in Royal Oak. I'm very devoted to being a Royal Oak resident. And I want to thank you, first of all, before I speak, for all the great things that you guys have approved of and are doing. We've got all kinds of infrastructure and parks and beautiful things happening. However, I'm here today because I'm very offended that our city codes have allowed a three-story home to be wedged, and I mean wedged, in the middle of our well-maintained block of modest ranch homes. We're a very stable block. We are friends, so many of us are friends with each other. Many of us are appalled. I'm sitting here with a number of my neighbors who may have other comments, I speak only for myself. But this lot is very deep that this builder is building in. It was, I guess it's considered a remodel because he used the basement and left two frame walls, so I guess no variances were required or consideration of the people on either side of this home he built. So we're small, little, 1,000, 1,200 square foot ranch homes. He has built a three-story home, the peaks on it are just peaks. There isn't anything in there of value, of functional value. It's just to make that house stand out like something on Cape Canaveral on our block. This remodel, and I guess that's what it's called, because it's not considered a tear-down if whatever, is a rude and disrespectful assault on our block. We are an especially cohesive group. Most of us have no intention of moving anytime in the near future. We're not a block that's falling apart and is going to be selling out our homes anytime soon. Why does the city allow this to happen? When and how do city codes change to accommodate this issue? I'm asking this commission to please do a code review. Maybe they're out of keeping with what's going on right now. We have some gorgeous homes being built in Royal Oak, simply beautiful. I'm probably the first one to say, but this one is an assault on our block. It totally disregards the character of our neighborhood and the impact of the homes adjacent to their build. Look at the website of this builder. It's called Fourth Dimension. He's just out for the cash. He doesn't even highlight the homes he builds. It just says, "We buy, we give you the most cash." So please investigate these matters and all of us, for all of us who have loved our homes and neighbors, and we wish that somebody would look at these building codes, because we have to live with this forever now, and this house is awful. So I made this little poster board. How do I hand this to you?
You can send it down this way to our deputy city clerk, and she can pass it down to us, Ms. Simpson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that has the address of the...
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And the photos of it, and the fact that it's not been locked, it's been wide open. Kids could go in there. It's a hush.
Thank you. All right, we'll go with Mr. Repinsky next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. I'm here also to talk on item 10 on the agenda, and, just checking to see who's paying attention. And I can't believe I actually agree with Mr. Karlowsky, sort of, but not entirely. You all should have received a letter, a memo, a copy of some items that were discussed at the last Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory Committee, which I serve on, where we discussed the ice rink as well. And as part of that discussion, we all agreed that having an ice rink in downtown is a great amenity, a great recreational feature that could enhance our committee. We just think the location is absolutely wrong, and for a lot of different reasons. Not necessarily agree with what Mr. Karlowsky said, but probably our biggest concern is the damage to the park, to Centennial Commons, a beautiful city centerpiece that a lot of people put a lot of time and effort in, including Commissioner Perusch, who headed that committee. The, I think you've underestimated the damage to the area, the grassy area. I've done some research on this before the last Parks and Rec meeting, and since. The average frost in Michigan, ground frost, gets out around May 11th, okay? So this thing, you're talking about pulling it out around February, so you can't do anything for a while. The frost line ends somewhere around April 25th for construction and roads. They, experts will tell you that you can't get the grass in any sooner than maybe mid-April. It takes six weeks for that grass to seed, to take root, to get any kind of structure or sturdiness to it. So, you know, optimistically, you're looking at somewhere around mid-April to the 1st of June, maybe into the 1st of June, before it even looks good. So then, you can't even walk on it for another three weeks or so, if everything goes well, if all the stars align and we don't have any bad weather issues or other things that could happen to it. So we're looking at a timeline where maybe our citizens can enjoy that area of the park, July, August, September, October, you know, four months out of the year. I don't think that's what the park was intended for. I think it's a bad location. Good idea, bad location, maybe look at someplace else we could do it, close off a street for a few months, do something else, back to the farmer's market. You know, just look at that hard, because I think the potential damage to the park grass is significant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Repinsky. Yes, in the back.
I'm Alex Morford, and I live at 503 West Sunnybrook Drive. I see there is an electric scooter agreement on the agenda today. I'm overall all in favor of this, as long as they aren't riding on and blocking the sidewalk, but I wish it was a Mogo expansion in front of you instead. It'd be great to have more Mogo stations in the city, like, for example, near the northern end of the Main Street bike lane to use towards the downtown. Based on the search I did, I found examples of other municipalities that seem to be using their ARPA funds to expand their bike share networks and bike infrastructure. I think this is something Royal Oak should look into as well. However, I also want to bring up my concern for the safety of these scooter users and bicyclists on our roads. There are some drivers in Royal Oak who I believe are being intentionally aggressive to bicyclists, and many more less intentionally putting cyclists in danger. While biking, I've encountered drivers that rev, drivers that rev their engines around me, tell me to get on the sidewalk, reverse their car towards me, make right turns in front of me, and make other comments that I don't belong, particularly on our signed shero roads. I've encountered this a lot. One road in particular that has a lot of issues is Normandy. If you're familiar, Normandy has the striped parking lanes, and then there's a shero immediately towards the center of the parking lanes. When there's parked cars, you have to ride in the main lane, and I'll have cars that tell me, they'll actually yell out of their windows that I shouldn't be riding there. So I believe that our current biking infrastructure is inadequate to protect cyclists and these scooter riders. For example, if there was a dedicated bike lane on Normandy, I think it would avoid many of these confrontations between me and drivers. I like the way main is striped, and I haven't had issues with drivers that are even at intersections, so I think we should, you know, see if roads like Normandy, if there's spots where we don't need all the parking and we can actually have dedicated bike lanes. You know, it's quite unsettling to have drivers yelling at me while I'm biking, since they're inherently in a position of power due to the comparative size of their car and my bike. To keep cyclists, pedestrians, and scooter riders safe, the city should be proactively benchmarking regulations in other municipalities, like six-foot passing zones, signage like the recently approved by MDOT Bike May Use Full Lane sign, and similar concepts to find recommendations. While I provided Normandy as one example, I could provide many more possible improvements to our bike infrastructure. We may need a dedicated non-motorized advisory committee to provide recommendations to this commission. In closing, cycling and other micro-mobility solutions are great modes of transportation that are cost-effective, reduce traffic, and reduce emissions, and I think you should approve the proposal in front of you today. However, until riders feel safe, I don't anticipate widespread adoption in Royal Oak, so I hope we can make strides as a city to be safer for all road users. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, who's next? Yes, come on.
Hi, I'm Hirsch Miller. I live at 1013 West Webster. I'm kind of just piggybacking off Nancy Simpson's comments. So, you can't see from there, but my, I printed off an aerial view of basically my yard and then my neighboring yard with the build on it. My yard is literally half of the depth of theirs, and their house is pretty much taking up my whole backyard. So basically, I just, I'm with Nancy on how codes need to be re-looked at. I didn't see even a city worker, anything to come out and survey the land or anything like that. I don't know if that happened, probably it did, but I think that just, I wish that maybe they looked at the neighboring yards before they built this huge home next to me. So it's literally taking up my whole yard. I don't know if I can do anything about it now, but I just wanted to voice my opinion on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. Here to talk about parking meters, and I've got some comments about bicycles. I continue to be confounded as to why a parking meter system allegedly working in 30 other cities is not working in Royal Oak. We now know that Royal Oak is the last remaining installation that's still in operation. There have been two visits to the commission meetings from MPS representatives with no improvement in the system and no onsite assistance for customers. Meanwhile, media reports continue to air, which further discourage customers. Over 3,000 people have signed the petition to eliminate the Century Parking System. Additionally, the parking fines have doubled from $10 to $20 per violation. This was done in order to maintain the city parking fine revenue while sharing fine revenue 50/50 with MPS. The exorbitant fines further discourage downtown customers. There has been no reduction, there is also been no reduction in the parking system employees, so that's not a credit. We have earned impassioned pleas from retailers to fix the system. Businesses on Washington are losing customers and revenue. You're affecting people's livelihood. MPS's failure to cure is unacceptable. You need to start over and restore front-end angle parking on Washington. It was on the DDA when we considered and rejected back-end parking when angle parking was initially restored to Washington. The MPS contract provides for termination only if the average revenue is less than $150 per month per meter. However, common law allows for contract termination due to non-performance. It should have raised concern that the contract, when, should have raised concern that the contract language prohibits the city from making disparaging remarks about the MPS system operation. That should have been a clue. There was a recent meeting between the business owners and Daniel Hill, the downtown manager, to discuss the parking meter system. The meeting was attended by Commissioners Macy and Colo. There was a follow-up meeting between the business owners and Daniel Hill. The business owners were expecting at that time an update or a resolution, but nothing. Perhaps Commissioners Macy and Colo can brief you. Now on to bicycles. Bicycles should be ticketed for violations involving obstruction of traffic and no lights at night, as are other motor vehicles. Individuals riding in traffic or in packs rather than single file at the curb should be ticketed. I would like to hear from the police chief about what is being done to regulate bicycle traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right, anybody else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of things here, and I'd be glad to take it to the appropriate department, and it's regarding safety. If you are going west on Derby to Washington, you won't be able to see the cars coming south on Washington. If you go down Washington towards 12 Mile, you will not be able to see the traffic coming east on 12 Mile. Very, it's very, very difficult. A lot of it has to do with the landscaping of these homes or where they sit. You cannot see anything. Also, it's very difficult if you are between more or less Washington and maybe up to Maxwell, maybe not as much. If you're coming out one of the side streets, you can't see the cars coming down Cattapa because they're all parked up from the two flats, who also go into regular streets too. So that's that. And like I say, I'd be glad to take it to the proper department if you tell me what it is. I know you're working on the master plan, and I know there's stuff out there, but I don't think people are getting it, and I think we need to get going on that. I mean, the people need to know what you're thinking. It's pretty important. And let me see if I have one more thing. I think a lot of people don't understand where the village money is going and how much it's going to cost them, and I think you need to clarify that a lot. And I just want to say, commend the two people here with the house, because it is a pretty bad situation.
Thank you, Ms. Salter. All right, anybody else? Going once, going twice? All right, we're going to bring the meeting to this side of the table. Just for the folks on Webster, I recommend, if you haven't already, to talk to our planning department. Tim will be able, Tim Twing will be able to help you understand the whole process. Just in general, it's usually a prescribed mathematical formula. So if they meet all of the, so it's not a, someone approving the drawings or whatever, but there is an argument to be made there. We've had this happen in another neighborhood, you know, overlays are possible, it's got to come from the neighborhood typically, but that would be the good place to start to understand how, you know, everything works and how this home came to be. That'd be my recommendation out of the gate. He's much more...
I did call, and I don't want to keep talking about it anymore. I understand my request is that the place we live in...
Yep, yep, and we're doing a master plan coming up, and I hope you guys participate in the master plan process. It's really driven by all residents, not just us residents, but all the residents. So that'd be my next bit of advice.
That'll help shape the codes, right?
Yeah, exactly. That shapes the codes, and, you know, from building heights to all of this stuff.
How do we participate?
There'll be notices that come out. Like, yeah, I mean, we're going to select the vendor that's going to help us coordinate it, and then it'll get going this year. And then in terms of the traffic issues, if you want to go to the Citizens Traffic Committee, Ms. Salter, if you want to make a, go to the Citizens Traffic Committee, you'll see we have in our agenda tonight, where we have a Citizens Traffic Committee recommendation. That's where a lot of those sign elements, parking issues, get evaluated and get brought back up to this table. So that's, that's the best place to start. Okay. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening?
I was looking at pictures.
Sorry, my default is to the left. Anybody? No? Okay. All right, the consent agenda now consists of City Commission meeting minutes from the 25th and August 8th, claims from the August 12th, August 12th special pay, and August 19th election pay, and August 23rd, approval of purchase orders, approval of special event permit, Kona Running Company Oktoberfest run, police and public services departments request to fill vacancy, award of contract S2202, 2022, sewer lining, approval of agreement, equipment sharing with the city of Ferndale, approval of professional engineering service and community development block grant Hudson Park improvements, award of contract for fair housing testing services, proclamation designating September 9th through 25th, 2022 National Rail Safety Week, and receiving file of following non-action items, the proposed Vincetta Bridges historic district update. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion on it? Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You know, I just want to point out this makes really good government action here. We have a sharing agreement with the city of Ferndale to share resources, share major equipment, as opposed to having additional expense ourselves or that city, and this is, it's really good teamwork with our neighbors here. So I know when people come out, you know, they see what's going on in government, this is a really good example of how we're working with our neighbors to save the city money.
Yep, local cooperation is key.
Yep.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to item seven, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment Request. We have the first one here, which is a public hearing and approval of new proposed plan of operation and entertainment permit, North End Tap Room LLC, doing business as North End Tap Room, 111 South Main Street. Gene.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. The Royal Oak Police Department received a request from North End Tap Room LLC to review a new proposed plan of operation to be located at 111 South Main Street in the city of Royal Oak. North End Tap Room LLC is owned by husband and wife John and Catherine Stoya. They purchased the Class C liquor license for $80,000, and they intend on spending approximately $625,000 on building renovations at that location. They anticipate renovations to take approximately four months to be completed and anticipate opening in February of 2023. They also are leasing the building from PRS Group LLC, which is also, which is an affiliate-owned company that's owned by the applicants as well. Although the Stoyas don't have any history of operating with a liquor license, Mr. Stoya is extremely knowledgeable in the self-service industry, and they have pledged to hire and seek out a management team with extensive history to oversee the daily operations there at North End Tap Room. If approved, North End Tap Room will operate as a neighborhood pub, and this proposal is unique because instead of a traditional bar, it will involve a tap wall. is unique because instead of a traditional bar, it will involve a tap wall. The concept involves customers being age-verified when they enter the establishment, and then they would receive a wristband, which will act as not only an electronic bar tab, but it will also keep track of the amount of alcohol that is dispensed. Originally, this proposal came to this body back in January, but it was tabled because the applicants were waiting to see what was going to happen with the legislation. And back on July 11th of this year, the legislation was passed and went into effect immediately. In your packet, the new legislation lays out the restrictions which are involved with the self-service of alcohol with a tap wall. Notably, the dispensing machine does not dispense more than 32 ounces of any alcoholic liquor before being reactivated, reactivated by somebody that works at the business there. The requested hours of operation are Tuesday and Wednesday from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Thursday from 4:00 p.m. until midnight, Friday from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The total proposed seating for North End Tap Room will be for 107, 107 patrons, and that does not include any bar seats. And just as a reference, the previous owner Dixie Moon Saloon had 113 seats, including 20 seats at the traditional bar at that location. The applicants are also requesting an entertainment permit as they would like to have a DJ or an occasional one-to-three person band, but they will adhere to the provisions of the sound ordinance. The police department's findings indicate that they meet all the necessary requirements and do not anticipate any burden on police resources whatsoever. I'd be happy to take questions and just to point out that the applicants are here as well as their attorney.
Questions for Chief Moore. Commissioner Douglas.
Chief, the, the application describes that they'll be dispensing beer, wine, and cocktails, and yet the elsewhere it says they can't dispense hard liquor. What are the cocktail? Two questions. First, what are the cocktails like?
The, the new law prohibits actually dispensing just liquor. It has to be a combination of a liquor and a mixing. It's, it's not straight liquor coming out of the tab.
Okay. Second question, 32 ounces of beer is one thing at whatever, three to 5%. 32 ounces of wine is one and a third bottles of wine at 12 to 15%. And I mean, this is obviously a matter of state law rather than, you know, our local. But you know what? I'm going to, I'll retract that, and I'm going to ask the applicant that question.
Any other questions for Chief Moore? All right. Doesn't look like I have to ask applicant to come up. They're already up here. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission. I just don't want him talking, you know, back there. I'm Kelly Allen here with John and Catherine Stoya tonight, and John is the expert in this area, so he can answer probably Commissioner's questions regarding that. But with your regard to your question about spirits, it's a mixed spirit drink that is allowable under the statute. You can't just like pull a, you know, get back or, or any kind of straight liquor. It's much lower in alcohol content. Want to answer the question about the wine?
Yeah. And just to add that the MLCC defines it as nothing more than 10%. So it's a pretty weak cocktail relative to most things. And then in terms of the wine, it's state losses 32 ounces, but we plan to set the wristband so it knows roughly the alcohol percentage of what it's doing and drop down the total amount that's poured for, before you get cut off.
So you say it's based on, on percentage of alcohol?
Yeah.
So I could have a beer and a wine and a cocktail, and you'll just add them up?
I should state that I am trying to make this work with, because it's the technology supplier, supplier of the screens and the taps that are able to program this thing. So I'm trying to work with them right now to code that so that basically per the percentage of alcohol that's provided, because even some beers are a little higher than others, that they would be cut down a few ounces or like half the ounces, for example, if you're pouring something of a higher alcohol content.
Okay. Good. Yes, thank you.
So when we hear like the doctor say no more than two drinks a day, he never really specifies, you know, like, is that just a, you know, 12 ounces of bourbon or 12 ounces of beer? But you're going to have your, your formula say, hey, look, when we talk about intoxication, yeah, maybe it's 32 ounces of beer, but there's some combination out there that if I were a server at your restaurant, not using the tap, that I would be like, okay, I need to, this person's had two glasses of wine and a beer, I need to do my serve safe kind of inspection.
Yeah, just like you use units a lot of times, you know? Someone says you can have one drink, it's one unit of whatever. It depends on, you can't have 32 ounces of vodka and have it be the same. So we'll, we'll tailor it to that.
Okay. That's good. Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome back to the TV. So I've seen this, this setup in other cities or states before. I think it's awesome. Can you walk us through what it will be like when we walk into the North End Tap Room? What's the, the dining and drinking experience like as a patron?
Absolutely. You also just reminded me that actually the 32 ounces is a Michigan-specific thing. A lot of states don't even have caps on it, depending where you are. Also, they don't have caps on cocktails at all. Additionally, we're the only state that I know of that requires you to actively wear a wristband. The rest of the states, you might use a card or something like that. So there's an added bit of protection for our state compared to most. And like you mentioned seeing it out of state, there's 45 other states that have this right now. So we're one of the last ones that just allow this. But basically, when you walk in, you would come to a hostess stand, you'd get your ID checked and give your credit card, and that gives you a key, an RFID card, or in this case again, a wristband, that is your key. You can't pour anything without it. But once you have this, you know, we'll, we'll tell you where you can go. That hostess stand would also be where you would order food if you want to go back up or if you want to order food right there. And then eventually you'd pick up the food with a buzzer. But once you go to the wall, you'd have the screens and the taps in front of you. You can read what information about the beer. And we'll also have just a, a non-digital sign as well explaining which beers are which and kind of guide you to the right spot. And some things will be non-alcoholic as well. We'll hope to have cold brew coffee and craft, craft soda. But anyway, so you walk up to the wall and you tap the, right below the screen, and because there's two taps for screen, you pick which one you want, and you pour. Basically, the card is tracking the amount of ounces you're pouring, so pay as you go. Stops at 32 ounces. It also stops at 12 per individual pour as well. And you get to see a counter of how much you're paying and how much you're pouring, and then you go sit down. Oh, you grab your own glass and rinse it if you want, and then go sit down. I think that's primarily it. Oh, and sorry, last thing. When you check out, because you're racking up by the ounce, you would just drop your wristband off in a bucket and leave, and we'd cash you out later. Or if you'd want to pay a specific tip or get your bill or whatever, then you can check out with a person as well.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Additionally, we will have people actually at the wall kind of guiding you because this is new for most people. So not only will you get the introduction when you walk in, but we'll have a few people near the wall giving recommendations and just watching. Plus, we'll have people bussing and a manager and food service in the back. So the, we'll plan to have mostly small plates, roughly about six items there, then about five or six main dishes as well. Part of the hope of this business and why we chose Royal Oak is we hope to be a bit of a before or after other restaurant locations around. So we want to offer food, but hopefully you come here and then go somewhere else.
That sounds like a lot of fun. And I guess, you know, you guys kind of started to answer this too, but what if, you know, my, my grandpa loved to have a good beer with me, so if I were to bring him out, but he just can't figure out this tap system, do you have a way to help patrons who might not be technology savvy like that or maybe differently able, not able to get up to the tap? So what's, what's the plan on that?
Well, the people, we're calling them wall ambassadors, such that they could help pour for whoever. If someone wasn't sure what to do, they could use their wristband and pour for them. I, I forgot what I mentioned, too. They're also monitoring the rest of the room because even with all the 32 ounces, we're still liable if someone, well, we don't want anybody to overdrink, but we're still liable as well. We'll get fined. Actually, the law is written, so the fine is twice as much as anybody else. Anybody who owns a tap wall in their building is twice as liable as any other establishment out there from a fine perspective. So anyway, we would have an ambassador near the wall that could either guide you, plus signs, or, and they'll have likely our own shirts to make it a little more obvious, or they can just pour for you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Duba. Yeah, I think it's a cool concept, and this is not a super important detail. I'm just curious about the logistics of it. So if you're out with friends and you want to pick up around, how does that work if you're limited?
It's really important.
Yeah, because he does, he does that all the time.
Logistically, would you have to put down your card for both people's bracelets, and you'd have to cover all theirs?
We, Commissioner Duba never covers every one, so let's be.
It is a little harder. I mean, worst case, you could put it all on yours, and you just have to ask for approval quicker. But realistically, we're encouraging people to just partner on in this case. If you wanted to pay for somebody else when you check in, you can give your credit card multiple times. So I mean, every person would have to check their own ID to get a wristband, but you can give your card for each person who walks in the door. So when we went to these places before, we used one card and get two wristbands per two IDs.
Okay. Thanks.
Noted, Commissioner.
Colo's not invited.
He actually buys a lot of drinks for people. He's, he's very generous, guys. I just got cut off.
Anybody else? All right. I mean, I think most of my questions were answered. Actually, that was my one question about my dad, like, I don't see him like walking up there with his bum knee right now, getting a beer, and he'd be yelling at me like, "Why couldn't you get, get me a damn beer?" You know? And so it sounds like there's a workaround for people that, you know, may not be as mobile as other people. So, and then I, looks like I have to pay for my dad's drinks, or he has to pay for his own. Maybe this is the place I take him. All right. This is a solution for my problem at home. All right. Okay. All right. Well, you know what? I don't, I don't think there's any other questions. I'll ask you guys to take a seat, and then we'll open up the public hearing. And when the public hearing's closed, if we have any more questions, we'll bring you back up. All right. Thank you. All right. Opening up the public hearing. Same rules as public comment. Anybody here wish to speak on this public hearing? Yes, sir. It's only for the, this public hearing related to the North End Tap Room. That's it. Yep, come on up.
Cameron Smith, 517 Marlin Avenue. I just had two follow-up questions. What's to stop someone from using another's wristband? Is it possible to airproof that so the wristband deactivates once you take it off? And then you can't get cut off and then use somebody else's wristband to get more drinks after that point? And then we were talking about limiting the total volume of alcohol consumed, specifically as it relates to mixing, you know, a beer at 3% and a cocktail, maybe a glass of wine. I'm just a little confused as to what the user experience for that would look like. You know, is somebody going to get really confused that they get cut off after two drinks, but their friend got cut off after four? I think that might be a little confusing, so I'd, I would want to consider both of those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anybody else wish to speak at the public hearing? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I think those are two fair questions that the petitioner wants to come up and, and answer those. I, I don't have an answer. I'm hoping the petitioner does.
Yeah. So for the first one, the wristband would deactivate after 24 hours would be the goal, but it would not, it would not work if you took it off. I would say there's not a 0% chance that this could be abused, but I think it is, and from everything I've seen, safer than a traditional bar. A big part of it is because we're kind of promoting craft beer and not liquor, so you're not going to get shots of anything or anything. But the wristbands are an indication of age as well, and we'll have people around the area, I mean, around the, the wall, the wall ambassadors that are checking for those things as well. But theoretically, you could take it off and give it to somebody else and use it in a similar way to.
Is that any different than if, like, I go up to the bar and buy three or four drinks and bring them back, and I just keep giving them to Commissioner Colo?
No, it's the same thing. And actually, another common point is the 32 ounces is actually similar to a pitcher. And just like if you were to buy a bottle of wine for the table or buy a pitcher, you don't know who's drinking it. It's actually the same, roughly the same volume that we're talking about. So I would almost say it's actually more controlled because you have people who look at it, I mean, you have people with wristbands that one of our staff gave them, and it might be a little more obvious which ones look of age, which ones don't, because you have a limited amount of wristbands at that particular table. So it could be abused, but I think that the, or the controls are actually safer than going to most places you would today. I forgot the second question. Ah, right. It's worst case, if you don't realize where your account is, basically around you go to far the screen, we'll cut you off and say, you've hit your limit and talked to someone. They might be confused if we did the per-unit volume as opposed to the 32 ounces, because it's a little bit more of a learning curve. But if we explain, I think when we, they entered it, that it's based on total amount of alcohol versus volume, then I would hope it blunts that to some extent. But the screen is very, I gotta say, it's very obvious, and we have the wall ambassadors right there to activate it for you.
So, well, just a, a question on that, because when I think about also too, this amount, this limit, if you come in, like, you know, sometimes people take roadies or, you know, they have a few before they walk to downtown Royal Oak, you know, at home, your person there, your host, is not just screening for age, but are they also screening, screening for existing intoxication?
Yeah.
And if that were to happen, then I would imagine they would not get a wristband versus in other circumstances, a person could slip through the cracks if it's just a bouncer checking an ID, you know what I mean? Or, or not at all, and sitting down and then having someone, a friend, bring them beers. You at least have a little bit more control because a friend, I guess they could get the pitcher or the, get them one on their own account, but it makes the burden a little bit higher than the typical situation, I would think. Okay. Sorry, Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess a question along those lines too is, will the wall ambassadors be able to, one, also cut someone off if they, they think it's, you know, okay, you're done, you know, or notify someone that? But then two, could they also reactivate if someone's at the wall trying to get a beer next to a wall ambassador? Does the wall ambassador have the option to re-up them? Will they be trained and able to turn that back on?
Yeah, I guess I should say they would be the main ones that would be re-upping them. So basically, if you're at a screen and it doesn't work, someone should be right next to you.
So it's like you have a self-serve kiosk at like Crow or somewhere, or somewhere, like?
Yeah, in that case, yeah.
It goes off, someone can come over and help you. You don't have to like go up to find the room.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Obviously, if nobody's there because they're busy or helping other people, you could sure find somebody else, but they would be the main ones. And they'd also be the main ones monitoring the, the rest of the room and making sure that, yeah, if someone is intoxicated, they could take away the wristband.
Commissioner Purush.
This brings up a related question, now that there seems to be more emphasis on the wall master. Current law requires that servers in restaurants and bars that serve alcohol go to the training for recognizing, you know, overindulgence and all that other kinds of training to make sure that they serve appropriately. Is the wall master also required to go through that kind of training? Is that part of the state law?
Commissioner, the state law states that, really weak state law, that only supervisory personnel must be trained in alcohol management by a company certified by the commission. And we have to provide those cards to the commission. All of our clients train everybody that touches alcohol. It's not required by state law, but in this case and in any case, especially with the way the liquor commission is handling violations these days, and when John talks about being twice as liable, if your normal Joe's Bar and Grill sells to a minor, the maximum fines a thousand, for him, it's 2,000. Intoxicated person, Joe's Bar and Grill, 1,000, for him, it's 2,000. Three of those kinds of violations of any kind of mix or match in 24 months, he's going to lose his license. So it behooves him, and he knows that everybody that touches alcohol. I, I mean, I've had the commission order people in the kitchen to be trained, which I disagree with. They're, they're not, they're, they're back in the house. That makes no sense. But everybody that sells or serves will be trained.
Okay, great.
That's in our plan of operation as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hahn.
Just to follow up on something that you said earlier, the wristband is good for 24 hours. You decommissioned after 24 hours. Is that right? So if I were to purchase a wristband at nine o'clock and hold on to it, am I able to use it again if I don't consume my 32 ounces the following day when you reopen?
You do have to turn it when you leave. If people don't, there is a fee to keep it. It's a good point. We could do it 12 hours, because it would still meet all of our things. Really, it was a timeline that we can set to, that basically assures that they don't keep it.
So is it the expectation that they would be turned in at the end of the stay?
Yeah.
Or if, or if it leaves the premise, when the RFD ID doesn't connect, it deactivates it, that might also be a good strategy on your end.
I just don't know if it track, yeah, I don't know if it would track. I mean, I guess if we cash out and didn't see one, we'd deactivate it and we don't see. But the simplest one would probably be to have a 12-hour, which would still meet our, uh, our opening times.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubac? Sure, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the amounts correctly. So 16 ounces is a pint, right? So two pints?
Yeah.
And you're cut off, or the staff has the prerogative to reactivate you if?
Yeah, it's essentially a bartender at that point. It's, um, do we offer you more drinks or not?
Okay.
They can, they can turn it back on.
So it's basically like you have to
Yeah, it's a check-in.
Remain coherent?
Yes.
If, if they're gonna let you go past those two pints.
That's where the discretionary, I mean, the wall ambassador comes into play. They're the same as a bartender right now who is watching.
Okay, understood. That sounds like two pints. It's pretty modest. We're having a lot of conversation about two pints. All right, thanks. You're, you're basically just automating the ordering and the payment of, everything else kind of remains the same, because you have to check for ID. You have a, a trained person, you know, at a certain point, checking to make sure that it's okay to have another. But the payment, the, um, self-serve, that's all just automated. And I shouldn't say automated, it's, um, not done by the business. Okay, um, anything else? Commissioner Collo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Merrick. I'm excited for this. I think it's a great addition to the community. I'm happy that Royal Oak is one of the first to get it, so I move approval of the plan of operation.
Motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac?
And the proposed entertainment permit?
That's exactly what I said.
Yeah, I thought, I thought, I thought that's what I heard.
I think that's what I heard.
I mumbled.
All right, so we have a motion on the table, discussion about the motion. All right, I'll just concur. I think it'll be interesting. I think it's gonna be a positive vote. We wish you the best of luck. It's hard work, um, probably a lot of late nights, but, um, you know, we're, we're happy to have you in Royal Oak and look forward to your success. I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, congratulations. All right, this brings us to item B, which is, um, the approval to amend plan of operation Ferndale Project LLC doing business as the Lincoln Tap. Chief Moore?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Royal Oak Police Department received a request from Ferndale Project LLC to review, uh, a change in the plan of operation. If you recall, this group came before you and was approved on May 10th of 2021 to operate in the city of Royal Oak. After they gained approval, they did not open, uh, to the public. They've since changed their doing business as name, and they'd like to open as Lincoln Tap. They are, um, requesting to operate a tap wall, as we just heard, following the same restrictions that are in place as, um, as of July 11th of this year. In addition to that, they are requesting to change their approved floor plan to remove their traditional bar, add the self-dispensing tap wall, and incorporate, uh, community tables into their floor plan. This change would provide interior seating for 71 patrons and an overall decrease of eight total seats. And the rest of the outdoor service area will remain unchanged. The police department does not anticipate this request to cause any additional strain, and we are not opposed to this request. I'd be happy to take any questions, and again, I believe the applicants here in the crowd that could answer questions as well.
Questions for Chief Moore? All right, I don't see any. The petitioner wants to come forward if they're willing and able. Love to hear a little bit more about the change and how everything's going and what to expect.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Commissioners, for having me. Um, I also want to thank John and Catherine for two things. Uh, one is for taking the brunt of the questions. Talk about the, the tap room. And the second thing is they were instrumental in getting this legislation passed at the state level. Um, so I personally would not be able to do it without their hard work. Um, and so, so I want to thank you again. Yeah, so I own Eastern Market Brewing Company in Detroit and also Ferndale Project in Ferndale. Um, we acquired the space that is formerly known as Roke. We've been, uh, we've been, we've been brewing there, uh, since we were approved earlier this year. But, um, thinking about opening another customer-facing space with current, uh, staffing shortages that everyone's seeing, um, sounded like a monumental task. And so when we saw legislation getting passed to, um, open the tap wall, it made a lot of sense for us. It's very much a showroom, um, for our different breweries. Um, we also have a donut company, and we roast our own coffee, so it's an opportunity for us to also show those products as well. So as soon as, uh, we saw this legislation moving forward, again, thanks to the two back there, um, we moved quickly, uh, to, to get going. You had mentioned being one of the first. I think we will probably be the first self-service tap room in Michigan when we open, assuming that this change is approved. And the hope is that maybe September or October, we'll be able to open our doors to the public.
All right, questions? Commissioner Collo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Merrick. Um, it's not a race, but I'm happy someone's going to win at this. So I guess, you know, kind of the same questions, if you just kind of walk us through, um, the previous applicant did a really good job explaining a lot of the intricacies of it. But can you tell us what the experience will be like, uh, at your place? And, you know, kind of some similar features, what might be different?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically exactly the same. Um, uh, we are actually, there's two technology providers. We're using a different one. Um, so the issue is the how to compare. We've talked about it a lot. Um, they have very similar technology and they follow all the same processes. Um, we're gonna have a host stand right when you walk in. I, just one thing I think is worth noting is we still have to abide by all the MLCC rules around someone being overly intoxicated. So we're still responsible for, you know, that. Uh, I operate, as I mentioned, two other breweries that have tap rooms, and the amount of liability and risk associated with this model is extremely less from my perspective. Um, we have a host that's at the front, right when you walk in. They will be IDing every single person that gets, um, that get, that walks in the door. As of now, our staff are expected to do anyone that looks basically in their, in their twenties, uh, or in their forties or younger. So we're gonna have 100% IDed, um, which is great. Um, they get a wristband with RFID on it. They'll walk up to the self-service tap. They touch the tap, well, first, there's two ways to do it, but I recommend they open the tap. They touch the screen, uh, with their glass underneath. And then once they stop, it stops tracking, again, up to 32 ounces, up to 16 ounces at a time. We actually aren't even gonna have 16-ounce glassware available. Um, the largest glass would be, I think, 14 ounces, 13 and a half. Um, so that's the largest pour someone could get in one, one, uh, one pour. If they, uh, need to reactivate, they can either go to one of the, um, bartenders, uh, that are at the walls, or they can go back up to the front, um, and get, get reactivated.
And then, uh, we also have ambassadors at the wall to help people or differently-able people.
Yeah, we'll have at least one or two people always up at the host stand. Um, and then we'll also have ambassadors that are walking around. Um, we have 30 taps total. Um, they'll predominantly be beer. One other thing that we're doing, I don't know if you guys have thought about this, but the wine and, we don't, we don't want to have alcohol, uh, because we're a brewery and a winery. So we'll just have beer and wine. But the wine taps, we actually have slow pour taps, so they pour much slower than the beer taps. I'm doing this because you pour from the side. And so, um, it'll pour much slower as well, so you don't have the chance of somebody, um, trying to pour wa, wine and it coming out really quickly on a beer tap.
And then, because I also want to buy Commissioner Dubac a drink, gee, does your technology have the ability?
Same answer.
Same, okay.
And honestly, I think we'll be pretty strict about just like every person having a wristband and doing it for themselves. If they wanted to buy the full 32 ounces, they could do that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I got, I got two questions that popped up in my mind.
Yep.
Okay, so the first one is, you mentioned it, and I think it's a good practice, anybody entering, even if they have a bracelet on, still gets carded upon re-entry. Because you could go out and give your bracelet to an underage person
Yep.
or whatever, and they could come in, and then you could come in later and get a new brace. Well, I guess the card would be activated, but you could, I mean, that's, I don't, I see that very unlikely, but it could happen. And tragedy happens under the, you know, when things we think are really unlikely.
Yep.
Um, is that kind of the policy that you guys are doing? Like, anybody that leaves, it comes back, even if they haven't, like, "I'm here," you know? It's like, "Well, I still need to check your ID real quick, just to make sure you didn't..."
Yeah. Yeah, like, uh, Commissioner Hunt was, uh, asking about, um, they should not be leaving the premises with a wristband. So, and the host is like literally looking at the door. Um, so one, I would hope that no one leaves. Um, if they do, I guess there's the potential that they could pass it along. But I agree that if someone walks back in, they should get IDed, and that's why we have the host stand right there.
Perfect, perfect. Because e, even, even if like, you know, you had a younger sibling, you could
Yep.
keep your bracelet, forget to give it, and then wait a few days, come back with a bracelet. And, um, you know, I don't know if they're different colors and all that stuff, but you could come back with it and then sit at the table and even pay for their drinks, you know? Like you said, 32 ounces is a pitcher, you know? You could, so, okay, that's good to hear.
And like you said, if, um, if somebody, um, uh, is at a regular bar, they can, they could get around. And so like, that is possible, and this makes it less likely. Um, you know, we've had situations where we've seen someone order two beers and then go to someone who wasn't IDed, and our manager on duty knows that they need to go get those IDs. So we actually are more automating, automating the process.
Yeah, and the more you get comfortable with the technology, sometimes, you know, these kids are smart. I got three kids, and they're like always looking for loopholes in everything. You know, I can't even like find ways to ground them, because they're like, you know, according to section 5.0 of the Fournier Constitution, blah, blah. So, all right, um, and then the other question, now this is just maybe for personal, like, okay, so, um, some people are better at pouring beer than others.
Yeah.
And some people, like, you could have this much beer and this much head. I just, I know it has nothing to do with it, but like, how does that work out in this when, you know, you're allowing 12 ounces to come out or whatever it is, 16 in a pint?
Yeah. Yeah, so we just, uh, we just installed our tap system last week, and it's the most money I've ever spent on a tap system. And the, and even though it's direct draw, which means the taps are literally on the cooler. So our Ferndale location, if everyone's ever been, we run the tap lines basically halfway through the restaurant. And so they're right there. We still glycol cool them, so they're coming out at the right temperature. And they have the technology in them that makes it almost impossible to have a foamy beer. We're also using specific glassware that's less likely to create foam. So it would be very difficult to have a bad pour.
Okay, but if you like a little bit, then you just
Yeah.
take your toothpick and stir it up, I guess.
I guess you could, yeah.
All right. Sorry, those are my technical questions that serve no merit to the public, but just out of curiosity, I had to have them answered. Anybody else? All right. Oh, oh, Commissioner Macy, you gotta get that hand up.
Sorry, I was just thinking about this, because when you were talking about that, about your questions, I know you live quite close to Roke, Mayor. Have a feeling you're gonna be there with your family sometime. So people come in and they are not interested in drinking. Do they, they don't have to give their ID and get the wristband? They just go on their merry way, or?
Yeah, they only need a wristband if they want to use the self-service taps. And like we said, we'll have the ambassadors that are making, well, you can't use it because you have to have the, the wristband. So if someone wants to just come in, they don't, um, need a wristband. We will have cold brew, uh, coffee on top. We make NA beer, um, which you guys still have to be 21 and over to drink. But, um, that will be available on tap as well. So if someone wanted to get a wristband, well, they'd have to be 21-plus, because they would have to, I'm thinking about someone who wants a cold brew and wants to use the technology, but they wouldn't be able to do it. They would have to go through, um...
Okay, so that was gonna be my next question, is the mayor's 15-year-old daughter can't come in and grab a coffee if she wants?
Um, she could get a coffee, but it'd be poured by our staff. So we'd have cold brew, um, available on tap, but there's a manager key card, basically, that the person behind the bar has, and they would pour it for them.
Okay, thank you.
You're still gonna do the pizza?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Because you mentioned the donuts. I'm like, "Oh, are we saying it's pizza now?"
No, both donuts and pizza.
Little, little scare there.
Yeah, don't worry.
All right, any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Douglas.
Uh, no, not a question. I'll move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Purush. Discussion?
Is there a public hearing?
No public hearing on this one. Commissioner Collo?
Um, I love our neighborhood south. Can you consider changing your name to like the Royal Oak Project or something a little more?
We called it, uh, it's called Lincoln Tap. Yeah, yeah, the DBA is Lincoln Tap. You had said Roke, I didn't want to...
Well, I said it was.
Yeah, okay, okay. But, um, yeah, so it's called Lincoln Tap after the street, um, that it's on, to differentiate it.
Yeah.
It'll be mostly Eastern Market beer.
I love Elopetjes, so it's perfect.
It'll be there.
All right, any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
All righty, good luck.
Thank you.
I think those are really exciting. Well, I think that went well. You guys are gonna get one dad joke per night, all right? One. Commissioner Douglas?
Do, do we all know how to tell when the mayor's told a dad joke? It's apparent.
You know where I get them from? My database. I know you guys didn't buy into entertainment tonight when it's here, all right? I'm here next two Mondays.
We're here all week, trying to deal.
All right, I see Mr. Beal in here tonight, so this must be the approval to amend the plan of operation Liberty Hospitality Holdings doing business as the Maury. Chief Moore?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Liberty Hospitality Holdings is requesting to add an outdoor service area to the south side of their building. And specifically, this outdoor service area will be located on private property in the existing parking lot. The outdoor service area will have seating for 120 patrons, and the interior floor plan will remain unchanged. Piped or canned music will be played in the outdoor service area, and, um, the applicant has agreed to adhere to the provisions of the sound ordinance of the city. Additionally, they're asking to change their hours of operation to open at 10:00 AM Monday through Friday. Currently, the Maury opens at 4:00 PM Monday through Friday, and the Saturday and Sunday hours will remain unchanged. Over the last year, the police department responded to 91 calls for service to the business, and nearly every single one of those calls were proactive business walkthroughs and, and checks, so none related to the service of alcohol. The police department does not expect this request to change to cause any additional strain, and we're not opposed to this request. Uh, Mr. Bellin's here with his attorney, and I believe an architect as well, so I'd be happy to take questions or they're here.
Chief Moore, any questions for him? All right, no questions for Chief Moore. All right, if you guys are willing, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Scott McDonald, uh, legal counsel to, uh, Mr. Bellin and his, uh, his, his family of restaurant hospitality companies. Uh, it's a pleasure to appear before you tonight. Uh, Mr. Bellin's no stranger, uh, to this body, of course, or, or the city. And, you know, he's got a great track record, um, happy to answer any questions. In fact, I may, I might as well go ahead and say this and brag a little bit on, for, on behalf of Mr. Bellin. He has three liquor licensed businesses, and I don't think I've ever seen this, and I've been doing this for a while. No MLCC violations among all three. So, um, you know, we hope that the commission will take that into consideration. It's really kind of a landmark situation, um, when, uh, when evaluating his request for this outdoor service area in his apartment lot on private property, which really is just making permanent, uh, the situation that he had temporary approval for and was previously operating during, uh, during COVID. And, and Mr. Bellin is here, and also the project architect, Kevin Bitterson. And we're happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Questions? Commissioner Collo? Thank you, Commissioner Purush.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Can you tell us a little bit about this outdoor structure? What's it all look like? Is it, um, permanent? Is it temporary? Is it heated?
Sure, sure. I think it's just a, an outdoor area, and I'll defer, of course, to, uh, to the other gentleman here. But it's an outdoor area. There's no overhead structure. It's gonna be, uh, enclosed, of course, with, uh, planters and fences to make sure that the, uh, stays secure. And, uh, but other than that, there's no, other than the planters and the fencing, there's no permanent structure contemplated. There would be heaters, um, depending on the weather.
So this'll purgle up for shade or?
Uh, no, I mean, essentially what you see in the front, uh, the sidewalk.
Sir, can you come up to the podium, make sure we can hear you, get you in the microphone?
Kevin Bitterson, Bitterson Architecture. Essentially, same tables and chairs, same, uh, fencing, uh, planters that will be on both sides to keep the separation between the few cars that'll be parked in the back portion, or that could be parked in the back portion. And, um, it'll be a very familiar look to what's there now.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Purush, and then Commissioner Macy.
Just a quick question about the, the music and the, um, entertainment outside. Can you describe that a little bit more? I know that you've agreed that the sound levels will be manageable. But is this gonna be a, a constant thing, just periodic thing?
I, I think it'll be periodic, um, and also subdued. Uh, they, they had music previously during the COVID shutdown, uh, when they were previously operating this outdoor service area, and their sidewalk cafe as well, um, with, with no complaint. Matter of fact, I think I saw in the materials that the police department furnished tonight of the 91 calls or whatever that were made to, uh, to the premises, only one was a sound complaint, and when the police arrived, their determination was, it was actually subdued, and it was not noisy. So I, I think that the, uh, the, the operational record of, of, of the licensee, uh, and, and Mr. Bellin, um, speaks for itself. And I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Macy?
Okay, I got distracted, because I'm looking at Google Maps of this. I think, I think I might know the person walking in front of the restaurant by Google Maps. Um, so this, I think, is for the architect. The, so the fencing that you're talking about going up there, so right now, there's those half-walls that are the planter things that are, um, facing the sidewalk. And then there's the, the metal fencing along this, the parking lot on the side. What, is that the same fencing that you're in, that would be going?
Right, would be the same fencing, and then, uh, planters that would be the same height as, as the fencing. I think we have four planters on the, uh, back rear side of the, um, of the fence.
And then that will be the same thing blocking off from the cars?
Correct.
Okay. It's like a chain link fence. It's not a chain link fence. It's like, right? It's not a chain link fence. It's, it's, uh...
No, it's a, it's aluminum fence, the same height, same look as what's on the front of the, along the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Wait till they're done their sidebar.
It's Nikki.
Oh, is it? It's my wife walking in front of the Maury?
And your dog.
And my dog, okay. Yeah, my dog. Her face is blurred out, but not his?
Yep.
It didn't seem right. Sorry. Got a little fun up here. All right, um... It seemed right. Sorry. Got a little fun up here. All right, Commissioner Duba. Do you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So I'm all about turning slabs of concrete and activating them into spaces for people. So I very much like this proposal. I, I like the, the temporary patio that was out there. I think my family and I sat out there during our speech needs. You could hear the music really well, sitting on the patio out there. So no objections from the police department, a well-known, excellent operator in the city, at a well-known, very well-known establishment that people enjoy, and now enjoy it outside on a regular basis. This is a win across the boards. I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Duba, second by Commissioner Perush. All right, any further discussion? I'll just echo it. Great operator, great place. Glad that's going to be activated, that, that parking lot. I mean, I know it's convenient to have parking there, but it's far better for the community, and apparently better for the business owner, to have people there enjoying the beautiful days we have ahead of us here in Michigan, and enjoying everything Royal has to offer. So appreciate the effort, appreciate the investment, and if this goes well, look forward to seeing you as soon as you get it up, or continue seeing you when you get it up. All right, I'll call for the vote, Mayor. Oh, 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 okay. All right, all right, hold on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Douglas, I haven't called on any of this yet.
So I just want to add that this, before it came to the city commission, came before the planning commission, where the mayor and I both serve. And the planning commissioners approved it, and I think my comment at the time was similar to that of Commissioner Duba's, that is, anytime I can see people eating and drinking out in, in public on the street, it adds to the vitality of our city, and it's something I'm very much in support of.
Good. Anybody else? I keep looking a couple times. All right. All right, with no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to item eight, approval of the electric scooter agreement with Bird Rides, Inc. I see Mr. Fenton over there. Is he gonna kick it off?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the city commission. So the city was approached by Bird Rides earlier this summer about the feasibility of bringing their electric scooters to the city. We learned Bird is one of the largest operators in this field, and we also learned that we don't have an ordinance in place that regulates or could prohibit the use of scooters in the city. So we, am I the only one hearing that feedback?
Are you hearing it?
We heard.
We good? Sorry about that. We're playing with technology tonight. We're hoping that Julian Roller from Bird can join us via Zoom from Los Angeles, so bear with us on some of those issues. I think we all know the pluses of electronic scooters, electric scooters, I mean. They offer an environmentally friendly transportation alternative. It's economical. But a lot of this has been prefaced with the issues that people have had, the cities have had with these scooters in their cities. In researching the issue, we found pretty much three majority concerns that have arisen. The first being scooters just being dumped overnight into a city. We're not worried about that, because Bird has actually reached out to the city about getting into an agreement whereas where they would be able to operate freely. The second concern, and I think it's probably the most concerning here, is the dockless model. Riders can park where they want, but where they want may not be where we want, and that has been an issue in several cities. Third, vandalism has been an issue, and we brought all three of these issues to Bird. And Bird's response and how they're resolving these issues, they shared some of their technology. All riders must be 18 with a valid driver's license, and the license must be scanned in order to use the Bird app. Riders must take pictures of where the scooter is left at the end of every riding session. They do have geozoning technology, so we can limit where these scooters are going. And in fact, we have placed into the agreement before you a prohibition for the scooters during special events and in Centennial Commons. And with the resolution we provided, we're actually seeking authority for the city manager to be able to make some of those decisions regarding geo-fencing, regarding slow zones or no zones on the fly, as we're collecting the data that Bird is going to share with us in terms of how these scooters are ridden, who's riding them, and where they're going. There is also a local fleet manager. Their role is to maintain, pick up, and distribute these scooters, including those that are placed on sidewalks and right-of-ways. What can the city do to try to, again, minimize the possible disruption to the city? We're approaching this as a pilot. We've requested limited hours of operation, 4:00 a.m. to midnight. While we haven't established these yet, we're encouraging the use of drop-off pickup points throughout the city, probably utilizing our parking structures and, and surface parking lots in the CBD. If there's a lot of use outside of the CBD, we can make that evaluation as to where we could create other additional scooter pickup drop-off points. And again, working closely with Bird and the fleet manager on compliance issues, if there's a problem, we've crafted this contract. We can terminate it within 30 days without cost. So in, in effect, we're approaching this a lot like a pilot. Again, because there isn't a regulatory framework in place here in the city, the city attorney's office and myself would work together to try to craft a regulatory framework through contract. Certainly, the city commission has the power to pass an ordinance, should it so choose, to either regulate these further or to prohibit them. So at this point, I can answer any questions you may have. I believe we do have Ms. Roller from Bird via Zoom now. This is fantastic. It's been the kind of day where technology has not worked, and I think we're getting there. I see her at least on the screen.
Mr. Fenton's bringing that up. Do we have any questions for Mr. Fenton? Commissioner Douglas.
Mr. Fenton, so are we contemplating an ordinance or, or an agreement?
We are contemplating an agreement.
So we could also establish an ordinance prohibiting scooters in our city?
So the easiest way for me to answer that is you could actually vote no on this agreement, and they could still come in, because there is no framework by ordinance prohibiting them in the city.
Right. So if we wanted to prohibit them, we could?
Absolutely.
Okay. Second question, will we be able to limit the number of vendors? That is, will whatever we establish, Mr. Leal will answer this question, limit the number of vendors who offer these, this service?
Not in this agreement. That would have to be done by a separate action. That's what Todd was hinting at. If, if you wanted to actually regulate this entire type of operation, it would be best to have an ordinance for that, where you can set up a permitting scheme, the number of permits that you'll issue per, per a given year, the number of scooters each permit email can have, et cetera. And, and that is commonly done in other cities who have regulated in such a manner.
So again, we will establish an ordinance, or?
That is up to if you wish to go in that direction. If, my understanding when this was being done is this was supposed, going to be kind of like a, the test pilot for the city for the next year, to see how our experience with Bird, as well as with these scooters, actually goes, and what we can evaluate to go further. Certainly, you don't have to wait a year to do that. If you feel that is, this arrangement is going very well, we can proceed to, to go the next step, which is to actually have an ordinance with a permitting system, if you so desire.
But, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. So, but, but again, so any other company, I mean, do they need an agreement with the city, or can companies just come in and drop scooters on the street, boom?
Boom.
As of today, they could come in and drop them on the street, which is why we look to have some control over it.
To Bird's credit, they approached us to work together, and then doing research. I do know of events pre-pandemic where they didn't, and there were cities that took, I wouldn't say retaliatory action, but they certainly regulated in a way that Bird was not going to be doing operations there. Bird has changed their approach with cities, and as I said, they approached us in May of this year. We had a lot of questions and a lot of back and forths on what an agreement would look like. It's August 22nd now, today. They've been very flexible in that, but we're, we're approaching this as a pilot, understanding that as a friendly transportation alternative to the vehicle, this is consistent with our SCAP. But certainly, we're very aware that there are concerns about how these scooters have been deployed in other cities, and we're bringing that to you right now. If, if you wish to regulate these, you need to regulate it by ordinance, and there is not an ordinance on the book right now, other than tangentially bicycles and, and electric scooters are not prohibited for riding on sidewalks in the CBD.
So again, Bird, we could sign this agreement with Bird, and, you know, Eagle Company, scooter company, could show up the next day and go, oh, Bird's here, you know, and start dropping their scooters here?
Yes, and, and we've started to see other companies' scooters, not in downtown, but we've seen them throughout the city. They're, they're starting to come here. It's part of a post-pandemic push, where you're seeing so many people from the larger cities, working from home, gravitating more to the suburbs. And so this field is, is going where their customers are, and for the foreseeable future, the majority of them are in the suburbs now, not in the large cities.
And then my next area of questioning, why exclude Centennial Commons?
We currently have had issues with skateboarders and damage in the park, and because it's a low-impact, family-friendly park, 15 mile an hour scooters, we thought was a bad decision to have out there. But if you would like to see them in Centennial Commons, we can strike that from the agreement as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Duba, and then Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think on that same line of questioning, one on, on Centennial Commons, wouldn't these already be prohibited on sidewalks in the CBD?
They are prohibited on sidewalks in the CBD. I don't know if we classify the park sidewalk as sidewalk.
Okay, so that's really just like an extra layer of protection to ensure we're protecting Centennial Commons?
From staff's perspective, absolutely.
Okay. I think, to your point, it is likely that competitors will, will follow if there's success here. I'm willing to continue on this track to get an agreement in place addressing all the known nuisance, nuisance issues, which there are. But the environmental benefits and the alignment with our SCAP demonstrate there's some value here. But I would like to see us, you know, can we operate on parallel tracks where we're fine-tuning this agreement and then modeling our ordinance after the things we're placing in this agreement?
You can certainly do that, and as an additional measure that you could need to consider is to draft a ordinance that would simply prohibit these types of, of scooters for everyone else but for this test pilot making reference, and then having a sunset provision built into it that would coincide with this, this actual agreement. And it also gives the opportunity to develop the ordinance that you're, that you just mentioned in the interim.
If we were going to say we're only licensed a single vendor, I mean, we would have to have some sort of IRFP or licensing process for that, wouldn't we?
This would be the agreement to do that. The, you wouldn't, in the future, once you develop the regulatory ordinance for permitting, yes. But for now, it would be an agreement, and what I was suggesting is a, a separate ordinance with a sunset date, when, which would prohibit everything else but this agreement. So you would not have any other scooter companies come in and dump their vehicles, just basically flood the market. That does happen across the country.
Right. I would, I would think that's highly likely. So an agreement with a moratorium until a specific date on any new operators coming in, other than this agreement. But then once our ordinance takes effect, it would apply to, it would apply to Bird as well as any other.
Yes, and since this is an agreement for a year, it's whenever the start date for the permitting process would start, yes.
Okay.
Just to build on that point, Mr. Leal, could it even be easier where you just have an ordinance that says, you know, in the short term, because you have the agreement that does the length of it, right? But you could have.
Am I on? No.
You could have an ordinance that basically says, hey, look, you know, unless you have an explicit agreement with the city on the operating nature of the fleet or whatever, then it's prohibited. And then that way, it's, you know, not getting as.
That would be another way to approach it, yes.
And then we, this, this one would just end, that one would be in, and if they take our learnings, we modify it, and then if there's things we don't want, then we get them fixed, and if everything's okay, you just extend the agreement. And if somebody else comes, a competitor, there's no exclusionary words, but they have to enter into an agreement. Maybe that's a little different based on that vendor.
That can certainly, if this commission is open to allowing, during the timeframe in which staff is developing a permitting ordinance, if you want to allow another competitor in, the ordinance that you refer to can certainly allow that.
Okay. I think there's some options there. All right, I see Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to make sure I'm clear. Scooters are currently not allowed. Electric vehicles are not allowed on sidewalks in the downtown right now, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay. So where do we envision these birds to operate, then?
Streets, by corners.
Okay, so.
Outside, you'd see, they'd be on sidewalks.
Okay. Where would they be parked?
Well, that's, as an office model, you know, it's really working together with Bird to try to establish.
Areas for compliance. And, and in my memo, at least, I recommended probably trying to put drop-off pickup points in our parking lots or parking decks downtown. Visualize and analyze the data that we're receiving and determine whether we need them elsewhere. The app itself tells the user where the, the scooters are.
So, and, you know, I, I know I've heard, because, you know, I'm looking at the, the ordinance, and it mentions Segway, so clearly this was written at another time when electric vehicles were considered on sidewalks, right? Like that, that was impetus for not doing it back then.
Paul Blart is still with us.
So then I, I guess, in addition to that, you know, I keep on hearing about, you know, a competitor could come and just drop some off. You know, I was talking to our city attorney earlier today. If I were to park my car on the sidewalk, it'd be towed. We, people cannot just go put their property on city sidewalks and expect it to be there the next day. So sure, Bird could come in and drop a million scooters in our downtown, or Ubers, or whomevers could climb, whoever could come in. But at the same time, we would, we could pick them up, because that, they're not, it's public property. You can't just leave vehicles like that unintended. Same with like a bike. If you leave a bike on a light post, we're gonna come pick it up. So I, I guess I'm not as swayed by the, oh, well, anyone could come in. Sure, you could come litter our sidewalks with your electric vehicles, but we can also impound them.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I think that is a, a risk, but it's still a burden for the city. You know what I mean? Like, we can't go and impound 30, you know, people have to call it in, we have to go and grab it, and it's a huge pain. And I think there's a.
A huge fee.
And a huge fee. You impound them, and, and that could be part of the business model. But, I mean, it's a, it's a fair point. I think never, nothing's as worse as we think it would ever be. But I think it's good that at least we have something in front of us that tries to iron out some of these concerns ahead of time, and you get some sort of commitment, and then you can see if people live up to a commitment. You know what I mean? The other question maybe I have to Mr. Fenton is, the Mogo has been, I think, okay, successful. I mean, we've heard some pretty good feedback from the Mogo people. So when we talk about drop-off locations, how far do we see these going into the neighborhoods? Meaning, do we see potential, like, you know, at VFW Park, or Grant Park, or, you know, along the Fourth Street corridor, or maybe a business is a drop-off location? Maybe you have a little store or something, and you want to say, hey, this is where you drop off, and maybe grab a soda or something on your way out. Do you see the, the, the reach of this not just being moving in and around downtown, which I think is more the conventional wisdom, but those folks that are maybe two miles from town, say, or a mile from town, saying, you know what? I'm not going to drive and park my car. I'm just gonna, oh, there's a, a bird available. I'm just gonna go walk a block, take it, zip down Fourth Street, for example, and put it in a parking garage, and, you know, go do my business. Is that sort of part of the intent here, or the, when we talk about mobility, sort of that short-range mile or two?
It, it is, and, and I know Julianne is, is on the Zoom. She can speak specifically about how far they can go. It's, it's my understanding that they can traverse the entire city, and in talking with other cities, and I would say in particular Oak Park, that just signed an agreement with Bird, they look at this as an actual alternative mode of transportation for people who are living in the city to go to work in downtown Oak Park. I don't mean that flippantly, but their downtown's very different than our downtown. But they actually RFP'd and wanted these into the city to fulfill what they saw was a need there with workforce and transportation.
Okay, very good.
Yes, if you can hear me.
Mr. Hunt?
My question is for Chief Moore, if you don't mind. Have you seen any concerns with having these types of vehicles? And I know we don't have them here in the city, but your counterparts are in other cities. Are they having any issues? I, I know when these first came in downtown Detroit, I saw way too many accidents with car versus scooter accidents. What are your thoughts on this?
You know, I haven't spoke to any of my counterparts, and I don't know if Mr. Fenton can tell me if there are any local cities around that have these scooters, but...
Right now, I haven't had those conversations to know if there are danger, you know, dangerous actions to be aware of, or just other things yet. But Todd, do you know where they're operating? Yeah. Most recently, again, Oak Park just signed with Bird. Trenton is working with them right now. And then other in southeast Michigan, Detroit, Ypsilanti, St. Clair Shores. Those are very disparate cities that are all embracing this mode of transportation.
And to your knowledge, they're not having any safety concerns?
I have not, and reaching out to them, no. It's been more Commissioner Collo's point to them being left in right-of-way's and places that you don't want them to be. And I see that. If zero tolerance and 100% compliance is what you're seeking, you probably should not have them in the city.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, first of all, for having me. Excited for the opportunity.
Oh, I didn't, is somebody speaking?
That's Ms. Julianne Roller from Bird. I know the volume's a little bit lower in here.
Yeah, with that, maybe what we'll do is we'll just get our questions out to Mr. Fenton, and then we'll come back, since that volume is hard to hear.
Okay, Commissioner Macy?
Yes, I think...
And Commissioner Perusch?
I think my question is also for the chief. I guess I'm pretty skeptical that people aren't going to ride this on the sidewalks in downtown. And obviously, outside, they can. But are we going to be charged with enforcing that? Are we going to have extra officers roaming around and getting them off?
You know, if the agreement is passed and these scooters appear, you know, I'm in total agreement that we shouldn't have people operating these electric scooters on the sidewalks, especially when the sidewalk cafes are there, and they can be narrow areas. And if they go 15 miles an hour, they should definitely be walking them. Then again, the enforcement piece is, is that something that we want to target and enforce those violations the same way we would do as a bicyclist? But that is something to consider, that I would think it is dangerous to be riding these scooters down the sidewalks, especially during the hours when people are out and about, and it's extremely busy.
Okay. Yeah, I'm concerned about that. My other question is for Mr. Fenton. So the cities that you named that have this in the Michigan area, they seem to be distinct from Royal Oak in the way that we're set up. And I guess I'm also really questioning how much this would be used as a car replacement as opposed to a walking replacement. It just seems to me the way that Royal Oak is set up, we're set up to be quite a walkable downtown. And I hear you're saying Oak Park is thinking that this will be a way for them to be transported from their home to their place of work in Oak Park. Perhaps we're thinking that same thing from Royal Oak. I'm just, I'm feeling a little confused about how scooters are a good model for a city like us. I'm not seeing that having scooters zipping around from one restaurant to another downtown is something that people are really seeking out. And I'm just wondering if you have thoughts about the city size and the different type of city we are.
Well, and that's why we tried to build some restrictions into the agreement and limit the amount that would initially be deployed, and really follow the data.
Is your mic on?
Yes, my mic is on.
Good, sorry.
Can you hear? So, yeah, the advantage of actually entering into an agreement with Bird is actually getting to answer those questions with data and not anecdotally. And so seeing how they're used, and who's using them, and when they're being used, and where they're going. If it's a, you know, Friday night, let's get on the scooters and rampage up and down downtown Royal Oak, we'll have an answer to that pretty quickly. And again, we built into this contract, we can terminate it within 30 days without cause.
Okay. So but that, it's not that we sought this out because we felt like there was a need or a desire for it.
We did not seek this out. Bird sought us out.
And so we're thinking, oh, we might as well try it and see what happens?
My position, and I think city staff would agree, was that because we do not have a regulatory framework in the books by ordinance, this could work as a pilot. If you do not want to entertain the pilot, I would strongly recommend you're going to need to regulate or prohibit these via ordinance, because today, you cannot do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Perusch?
First of all, are you anticipating that if we agreed that this would go forward as a pilot, that it would start this season, this year, or is this something that's going to start like next Bird?
In my conversations with Bird, it would take them about three weeks to four weeks to deploy the first round of scooters, which would be about 100 to 150.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
100 to 150 scooters would be deployed within three weeks. They would have to select a fleet manager first locally. That's our local point of contact for making sure that they're picked up, distributed, charged, any sort of, any other issues with a scooter there. So we do have boots on the ground that can help us in terms of a regulatory framework. But no, this would be in effect, you know, after our speech and ease, we're talking probably late September, early October.
Okay, thank you. Personally, I would prefer some kind of official regulatory framework in place, like an ordinance, before we allow this to start. I'm really uncomfortable with a trial period, even with a good agreement in place, because I can anticipate that there's issues that are going to come up that we haven't thought about, that are not going to be in the agreement. And I think the potential there is for a bad experience to happen that would end up prohibiting the whole service without a regulatory framework in place like an ordinance. So I would prefer to wait until perhaps next spring to start this. I have no objection to it. I think that it's a good addition to an urban area. But I really think that we need a strong regulatory ordinance in place before we allow any one operator to come in. I'm very uncomfortable with a trial period.
Mr. Fenton, geofencing, I don't know if you have the answer to this, but can you actually geofence them to keep them off the sidewalks in downtown, where they stop operating? Is it that precise within feet?
I don't believe it's that precise, no. And that may be a better question for Bird.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we get the, did we get the volume popped in just yet?
Richard, are we live with the Zoom? Julianne, can you hear me?
No, she can't hear you still.
Oh, because he's muted.
Oh, maybe he's unmuted, Mr. Fenton.
Because then he's going to echo.
Ms. Roller?
You're muted on Zoom. Not your microphone, but on the Zoom.
Is that going to cause the echo?
Yep.
But we can ask a question and then mute again.
Well, we'll try it with the echo. Let's see what happens.
Are you willing to hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. How are you?
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, the feed was just muted, so I missed your most recent question. If you could repeat it.
So the immediate question I had is geofencing, what's the accuracy of the geofencing? Can you actually prevent them from going on sidewalks?
Sure. So at this time, no, we can't prevent them from going on sidewalks specifically. That is a technology we're working on in some of our cities to make sure that people can't ride on sidewalks. But it is still in testing right now, and we're hoping to, you know, have that expand in our cities in the coming years. That said, you know, sidewalk riding is something that every city is very passionate about, and that's why we push a lot of messaging to our riders. So that includes in-app reminders on a regular basis that they're not allowed to ride on sidewalks, that it is against the city law to ride on the sidewalks, as well as messaging on the scooters themselves. No sidewalk riding written clear as day, right on the scooter. So we have a variety of different messaging points to do so. But, you know, that said, sometimes there are areas where there's just too much pedestrian traffic, and that's where some of our geo-zoning technology can come into play. So we can geo-zone certain streets off where you just might see too much pedestrian traffic, and we might want to just limit it if we see certain areas having too many sidewalk issues.
Okay.
We just missed the last part. Hopefully, you've heard some of the conversations.
A couple of commissioners have expressed concerns about moving forward with a contract without an ordinance. Can you give, maybe in your experience with other communities, you know, your take on it, your perspective, being the petitioner?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think what's great about the timing right now is, you know, we are going into the fall season, so it would be a fairly short operational season for 2022. And I think, you know, when you think of a trial period and you think of a year long, it can be very intimidating. But, you know, the fact that we just have a few months here to operate, you know, say we launch in mid-September, you know, hopefully we can make it through part of November. Obviously, it depends on this. Now, I'm a Midwesterner myself, I know how temperamental it can be. But it really gives us the opportunity to be working together and help you guys come up with the best ordinance to put into place for the spring, when we would continue operations, hopefully, and maybe those competitors might come into play. But just to be pretty frank, you know, I think within the micro-mobility realm, you know, we all want to be working closely with cities, you know. Like Todd had mentioned previously, sometimes scooters have been just launched in places without city permission. And that's not the way things are operating these days typically. So we really are hoping to work collaboratively with the city. You will have a dedicated account manager as well, who is there really at your beck and call. So anything that needs to be changed can be changed very, very quickly to make sure that things are operating smoothly.
Any questions? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, good. So what are, this was, question was asked of our police chief. What, how do you measure or do you record collisions, accidents, et cetera? How do you keep track of that, or who keeps track of that?
So typically, those are kept track by, you know, reports that are made by the city or something like that. We can't just proceed with data just without it being reported as such. So the data isn't always exact on our end. In our personal data, we don't see, we see a very small number of incidents happening, but obviously, things might be reported to the police instead of us. So that said, you know, we don't want it to be a burden on the police, but it would likely have the more accurate data. But that said, safety reports that have been done by a number of different cities have shown that the safety is very similar to that of a bicycle. So if you feel safe riding on a bicycle on a road, it would be very similar to ride on a scooter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think we heard a previous comment from Commissioner Perusch about getting our ordinance in place and then moving forward with a trial. Is this something you would be on board with us also, potentially working with us to write some regulations, get some best practices in place before we go to the full deployment?
So we do actually have a sample ordinance to share with some of our cities to guide you in the creation of an ordinance. It's very lengthy and really covers all the bases, and that's something we're happy to share with you to push forward. But again, I do think it's a great time to kind of launch right now and have any specific, you know, changes that need to be made specific to Royal Oak as it's been operating. It kind of gives you that experience to put it into place before it's all finalized.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, I'll just add to my ideas. I mean, I don't, I mean, we, in my mind, we kind of have two separate issues here, right? And Mr. Fenton, chime in if you think I'm incorrect in my assessment. But we have a contract in front of us to do a test on micro-mobility in and around our community, not just downtown, albeit that's where a lot of the focus is. And that is separate from an actual ordinance that would need to be passed, independent of this, with this, however, that, you know, would regulate, you know, how these operators would operate in our community. And as of right now, the absence of an ordinance basically allows, you know, the use of these. So whether it's Bird or anybody else could come in, and yeah, if they park it on the sidewalk, they do a horrible job, you know, we pick up, repossess their property. But that doesn't mean the burdens go away. That just means it's a headache, and you got issues, and, you know, whatever it may be. I don't, I mean, I think we've been successful in the past having trial runs inform our decisions to see what ordinances should look like, what the problems that are unique to Royal Oak are. I like the idea of having an ordinance definitely in place. I like the idea of having contracts that are, go beyond the ordinance, that specify, you know, helping us solve some of our needs and issues. So not, so it's not just how badly people are going to operate, but if we move forward with an ordinance that says we have to have an agreement with an operator, you know, where do we need your help? Like, look, up by, you know, the high school, you know, and, you know, we need, well, maybe that's a bad example. I don't know what the age, you know, 18?
18.
Okay. So another part of town, like near Myers, you know, we really need, we have an issue with between bus stops, and, you know, there's a gap in, you know, transportation. If we're going to do this, we're going to need you to commit to having at least 10 of those available, you know, in this particular location for people that need this mode of transportation, to help them get from point A to point B, so they can get to point C. So I like the combination of a contract and an ordinance, and an ordinance that says you have to enter into an agreement, because when we enter into that agreement, we'll have the information and data to say, you know, these are how people are using it, this is where our gaps are, this is where we need help to fulfill our mobility plan, our non-motorized plan. Even though these are motorized, it's kind of not motorized. So, you know, the worst that can happen, I mean, we have a 30-day termination, right? So, Mr. Fenton, even if by like day six, you know, something really badly happens, we can bail, they can bail. But Commissioner Perusch does have a point, where if this is really a good opportunity for us and a great option, if we go forward and it's not thoughtful about how we do it, and it fails miserably, it may fail for the wrong reasons and not for the right reasons, and that can also create a dilemma for us. So, but I do think we have two separate issues. Personally, I don't mind having a trial run with a reputable vendor to see how it goes to inform our ordinance. But that's how I see the world. Commissioner Perusch?
This is a question for the city attorney. Have you reviewed the agreement that is in front of us, that is proposed?
Yes, I have. I assisted Todd in reviewing and making proposed revisions to him to send back to Lime, I mean, to Bird, sorry.
Okay, that was my question. I just wanted to be sure that you've reviewed it. Thanks.
Whoa. Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Collo.
So I guess I feel like I'm going to be the party pooper here, because I like riding scooters, but I don't think this is something that Royal Oak needs or wants. And I'm sort of confused as to why, I mean, I understand what we're saying, like, oh, we could just try it out. But why would you try out something that nobody is asking for? Like, I've just never heard anybody say, like, oh, I parked on this side, and now I have to get in my car and drive, you know, half a mile to go somewhere else. It doesn't seem, I've never heard anybody wanting to use these or asking for these. And I've heard in cities that have them, lots of people complaining about them. People do ride them on the sidewalks all the time. People do ride them underage. I mean, you'll just have to have the app. And people do, I mean, I know you have to scan your driver's license to get the app. But if you think people can't get around that, people ride it with their kids on the front. I mean, it just seems like I anticipate people are not going to be thrilled. Most people are not going to be thrilled about having scooters in downtown Royal Oak. And I don't think it solves a problem that we have. I don't think it's, you know, we talked about that it's being sold as the environmental benefits. But I, like I said, I don't see this as a replacement for cars in any way in our city. And I could be wrong, so maybe that's what the trial would show. But it doesn't, it seems to me like we're trying to fit in something that benefits someone else but doesn't benefit our people to see if maybe it would work. So I'm pretty concerned about the backlash against this. I've seen it in other cities that have these scooters that it's, I mean, people who ride them like them, but everybody else hates them. So I'm concerned about what bringing this here would do. And we already have some things in our downtown, in the streets and the parking, that people are upset about. And so I feel like throwing this wrench in right now is not a great idea. And I, if we move, if we're interested in moving forward in this, I strongly support Commissioner Perusch's idea of putting the regulation in place and reconsidering this again in the spring.
And just, I'll push back a little bit on that. Like, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what Bird's financial model is here. But you're right, clearly, there's a market, right? They wouldn't be asking to come here. And that market is based on citizens of Royal Oak or visitors of Royal Oak needing the amenity or the micro-mobility service. I don't know that everybody else hates them. I don't know that. Maybe it's akin to like bike lanes. You know, we put it in, we knew that these bike lanes were helpful. We knew that, you know, not everyone rides a bike, but they're there, they're an option for people. And, you know, we heard some loud voices of people that hate bike lanes, you know. It became a joke in our community. So I don't know those things. That's why I like the trial period. I'm not fully committed to anything here, because every city's unique, every service is unique. And if some, if we try it and it fails... every service is unique. And if some, if we try it and it fails, and we do get that feedback from the community that it's more harm than it is good, then yeah, we don't, we don't move forward. We, in parallel, have an ordinance that basically, you know, gives us many more options to control it. And if only 10 people use them in Royal Oak, they'll only have that many scooters. If 1,000 people are using them, they'll have the right amount of scooters to, to, to meet demand. A lot of businesses in town, so there's a lot of Class A office space. And if you go to most of those, small and big, they have the company bikes that people can check out, and people are using those bikes conveniently to ride, to go get a coffee or quick lunch and back. So there is some of that mobility commuting. I don't know. But it'd be interesting to see the data. You know, what do people do? And it might inform us in other areas. And I guess that's maybe a question, Mr. Fenton, from a data point of view, although we don't and wouldn't own the data, do we get insight reports as far as user reports, how they're using it, where people are going? Is that something in this contract? I have to, I didn't think to look at it ahead of the meeting. Okay. And that's helpful to me. I mean, to think about, you know, how that informs our ordinance, how people are using it. And then you could say, well, look, 90% of the people are using it to go down, you know, Rochester Road or Main Street, from the north part to the south part of the bike lane. Okay, well, then if we have problems in other parts of the town, maybe there's, there's focus, you know. Sorry, I wanted to, to address, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree, I'm just saying I'm pushing back, giving an, an alternative, Commissioner Macy. But that's what we're here, the deliberative process, right? Commissioner Colo, you had a comment?
Yeah, so just quickly on data sharing, it's number six, and it simply says, Bird will provide data to the city of Royal Oak as necessary to assist with monitoring program usage. I think as we found out with another technology in town, these really need to be way more specific as to what we're looking for and what their requirements are to get data out of someone. And I'm sure Bird is well-intended, and I think we thought another data provider was well-intended. I just want to make sure that any contract we have is kind of in a little bit more levels of scrutiny and detail. I also agree with Commissioner Macy. You know, I don't think that this is something that was necessarily being sought after. I have seen people riding bikes on sidewalks get yelled in, riding a bike on a downtown sidewalk. I think it creates an animosity. And, you know, I'll tell you, I was in the nation's capital this week. They have really nice, big sidewalks there, and lots of rides, you know, these scooters all over the place with stickers that say, don't ride on the sidewalk. And I threw my seven-year-old on the front of the scooter, and a few of us rode around, because there's no one around us. It's going to happen. I mean, it's, this will happen. I, the way, I mean, I, I also don't want to sound like I'm down on this. I think that there's a pathway forward here of some sort. I don't think it's a test run right now. I'd rather see a plan come back to us. You know, where, where are we going to put these? I think that's one thing that we really need to solve before we move forward. Where will these be housed? Give us, you know, show us a plan exactly what parking spots we're going to use. Will they impact our NPS contract, especially if you're turning on lots now, and we're taking a space away? Where will these be deployed? Will we have a map that takes us from Meyer to downtown? You know, I, so I think if we put a plan, a non-motor, or a low-speed motorized plan, I don't know what you'd call this, if you put some sort of plan together, it would give us a better leg to make an informed decision. And maybe let's do a, you know, I'd be happy to do a test in the spring. I think this could be a cool, fun technology, but I think we need to iron it out just a little bit more before we jump into a agreement tonight.
Well, and I, and I'll push back again with Commissioner Colo too. And I'm not advocating, like, all I, I think we're overthinking this, because that's what we do in local government, right? We have the ability to, nothing is stopping, right now, we can't prevent them from coming in anyway. So if they want to do their own test, they could just jump in without any terms, do it. Now, that probably would push our hand and force our hand to come up and say, well, let's have an ordinance to ban it all. And that might be a good thing, it might be a bad thing, I don't know. But right now, we have some semblance of control for a six-week, you know, seven-week study. And, you know, it's not brand new, you know what I mean? Like, this is, we know what the potential issues are, and if we suffer from those issues in that trial, and we can't resolve them as a result of that trial, then it's a no for me permanently. I don't have an issue, I mean, within reason. You know, you always have, you can't say, well, I'm going to ban cars because somebody goes 40 in a 35, you know what I mean? I'm going to ban cars because tons of cars park over the sidewalk all the time, preventing people from walking across the sidewalk. We can't police everything. But, you know, I, I think that, to me, having a learning, you know, having some control, having a limited contract, that really we don't need anyways, or they don't need anyways, rather, you know, I think helps inform us over the winter to hammer out what we would actually need, because we're, at this point, we're just going to be guessing what problems are, not, you know, enduring them ourselves. I'll go with Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Perush.
The mayor said, what is at the core of my perception, and that is that anybody can do this. Bird doesn't need our agreement to do this. Anybody could come in and start dumping scooters on our property, and we'd be in the business of retroactively and quickly forbidding them, crafting an ordinance to forbid them. I think there is consumer demand for this, and I, I realize it's a, the mayor also said, you know, we tend to sort of bog down in the details. I think this is something that is, that feels like Royal Oak, and sometimes it's okay to ready, fire, aim. And so I'm inclined to support this proposal. I appreciate Commissioner Colo's request for detail on exactly what kind of data we're going to get and when we're, how readily we're going to get it. I think that's a very good point. But in general, I support the proposal.
Excuse me. Commissioner Perush.
If it is the case that the scooters themselves are not really going to be deployed in full for, until about eight weeks from now, you said, that's the middle of October. We start to get snow and really crummy weather in October. I'm not so sure that starting a trial period at that point in time is, is correct.
I think it was three to four weeks.
It's three to four weeks. Okay. Even so, even so, I mean, we're getting into fall. I'm not so sure that starting a trial period in the fall is the best time. I don't think we get good data in terms of if we're logging for, you know, for six or eight months of data. If extending it over the winter, we would have a good, we would have a good database to act from. So I guess I'm just concerned about starting it this late in the year.
I do see that Julianne is trying to jump in. I'm the only one that can see her.
Oh, yeah. Tell her our apologies. We're, we can't see her.
No worries. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to touch on when we might be able to launch. Since we are active in Detroit and in Oak Park, we would likely be able to see a launch in, in September, probably by mid-September. And just based on our data in just Minnesota, for reference, last year, we were able to operate until mid-December. So obviously, you know, you can get a snow in, in October, and it could start early, and we have a weather team that's always keeping track of that to make sure we're not operational with bad weather. But there definitely is the opportunity to potentially go into November and even December, weather permitting. So that is something that, that is, can be considered. I do understand that it is a shorter trial period, but we would be able to get up and running pretty quickly. And I did want to touch on the data as well. We do give the city access to a data dashboard. You can access it at any time, and it has things like keep mapping, so you can see where riders are riding, how many rides per day that the scooters are getting. So you can see the demand of the scooters, where people are wanting to use them, where people are using them, and you can access that really at any time.
Commissioner Macy.
So just to push back on the mayor's pushing back, you know, so talking about this being a trial period, because we want to figure it out and see the data, it just feels like we have recently answered it into our contract where we tried something else out, and maybe didn't look enough at the data that was already existing. It's not like we're the first city who's tried this. And Grand Rapids just terminated their contract with Bird because they found it to be a nuisance. The leaving of the bikes, the scooters constantly on the sidewalk. And so it just feels like this was presented to us, it's like, hey, let's go and try this. And throwing this out there without having done any of our own research on it just feels like it doesn't make sense. And I'm a little, I will admit, I am gun-shy, because we stepped into something that we are having trouble stepping out of. And yes, this does seem to fix the problems that we had with the last contract. But again, like, yes, maybe they could just come put their scooters here, but if we vote for this, then we are giving our stamp of approval to it. And we've said, as the city commission, hey, we think this is a good idea, we can try it. Whereas if they just come and dump their scooters, we can rush to get an ordinance in place, and we're not, we have not given our stamp of approval. We haven't said, oh, yes, we think this is a good idea. Because people are looking to us to make the decisions for what's right for the residents of Royal Oak, not just try it out and find out later based on what's good for the company that brings something to us. And again, I think riding scooters is fun, but I've been in a lot of cities that have them, and the feedback I have heard from people in those cities has been fairly negative. So I, I feel like, I don't understand why we would just try something without feeling that there's a need for it.
So, so I'm going to push back a little bit more and say, you know, Mr. Fenton and his team did, you know, do some research. It's not like he just took this agreement, you know, washed it out, put it in front of us, and said, what do you guys think? Mr. Fenton did look at the potential issues, talked to other cities, Oak Park involved Mr. Liao. So we are getting something that's halfway thought out from staff, if not well-thought-out. And your point is valid, but I think that the, the challenge is, is that we are going to be crafting an ordinance. I see that happening. I'm in favor of moving forward with, you know, so I think we're all in agreement there. The question is, between now and when that ordinance is put in place, do we have a trial run? Or do we have a, you know, uncoordinated, no data, no nothing, no partnership, and have someone come in and put these up in our town, and then we're scrambling to, you know, have this negative experience when maybe through this trial run, we find out what the burdens are, and then we enter into an agreement after the trial run that says, okay, you know what, what we found, these are the things that our residents hated, these are the things that we love, let's double down on the things we love, and let's, you know, put these measures into the things we don't love, and if you can't do that, then we don't do it. And that could be the same for everyone. So I think that we have the, I think the trial run gives us an advantage there. It's six weeks, you know, yeah, we might have problems, and that becomes a moot point. But I will say, staff did think this out. Mr. Fenton, I don't know, maybe you can share some of the, your thoughts and perspective, not just on the, the contract and the legal part of it that Mr. Liao highlighted, but maybe some of the operational nature, you know, folks that you've talked to, and benefits you see in our community, especially maybe from your economic development days.
Well, specifically, and those days aren't over yet, but specifically, every city that I've talked to that has had the Bird scooters in their city have uniformly said, Bird is very proactive in working with you to try to make it work. And at some point, depending on situations, Grand Rapids may be one of them. I believe Ann Arbor was another one. It did not work for them. This for us is, is taking the, you know, Bird presented an opportunity to us. We, we analyzed this. We said, we don't have any framework in terms of how to regulate this. We can draft one, try to see what the commission thinks about this. It's not really city staff's job to dismiss these sorts of ideas out of hand without bringing it to you first and giving you the recommendation on what you can and can't do. And in this case, you can treat the Bird agreement as a pilot, you can concurrently craft an ordinance, in part based on the data that you're collecting, or you can immediately jump to that conclusion and say, I want to just regulate or prohibit them immediately. You don't have that option, or we, that doesn't exist today, and I'm, I'm bringing that to you. That's a hole. How you're going to act with that is up to you. This is a policy decision. We understand the, the difficulties with agreements, and, and Mr. Liao and myself and Bird worked very, very closely. There was a lot of language that obviously was more to the benefit of Bird, and they took things out of the agreement that if I was on the other side of the table as counselor, I wouldn't have agreed to. So I, I can say they've been extremely flexible with us, both in terms of what the operations of Bird would look like, and certainly what the legal agreement looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with respect to staff and appreciation for some of the positions at the table, I think we've all kind of laid out where we think we are, and I'm going to move denial of this recommendation.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Colo and a second by Commissioner Macy. We didn't give a chance, we didn't hear from everyone. We didn't hear from Commissioner Dubach. So instead of going to the motion maker, I'm going to go to Commissioner Dubach for this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Apologies.
So I appreciate staff bringing this forward, you know, with a framework, so we have something to discuss, and not just being like, hey, do you guys want to do scooters? That's a thoughtful way to approach this. I don't think anyone's forcing our hand in any way. The fact that there's not a clamoring for this, I don't think there's a reason not to do something. I think defending the status quo is just government at its worst. I don't know of anyone clamoring to, like, pour their own beers, but we enthusiastically supported that, knowing that people are going to do it, right?
Good one.
Cool. And, and there's a market for it, which is why there's two businesses investing in it, right? And there's a business here bringing it forward, because they think that there is a demand for it. And I think it's ironic to be like, nobody wants this, but they're going to be all over the place. So who's riding them all over the place, leaving them everywhere if nobody wants it? I think that those, those ideas kind of conflict with each other. That being said, I, I would like to take a little bit more time to not just jump into an agreement. I think the agreement's fair. I think it's probably best to have time to think out an ordinance, you know, do a little bit more, have a little more dialogue with some of the other cities about the specific problems they've had, talk with Bird, you know, more directly around what the solutions to those problems are. My primary concern is really just where, where I've seen them in cities, like, and I see them strewn about, it just really booms me out. It's just kind of a mess. And, and I believe they're working a good fit to address that. But I just think there's a little bit more detail to get settled via an ordinance that would then allow us to issue licenses that still have the termination clause and all that in them. And also give us time to hear from other vendors, so we're not just, well, I believe Bird is a good operator, not, you know, approached us with some good faith. I think there are several operators in this space, and I would want to enter an agreement just with, you know, the first one that, that asked, and even though I appreciate it being asked, because I think it is, I think it can be a cool, helpful asset in a community that helps improve mobility without folks having to, you know, hop in their car, whether they're trying to get, you know, from, you know, a lunch downtown to the, to the zoo or to one of our parks. I think there is value in that. I just don't think we need to move forward with this as it is right now. I would like to see us bring an, start crafting an ordinance and think through all the details of it.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that I slightly disagree with Commissioner Dubach as, as well, because, you know, one, if other scooter companies wanted to do this, they would come and propose the same thing, or they'd be here. But we have somebody that, you know, the door is always open. We don't restrict it. It's not a special agreement or anything like that. They're coming to us saying, I want to put this, just like every petitioner, just like the folks at the taproom. We don't have an ordinance about all of it, but they came and said, I want to do this. Here's my plan. What do you want to do? Not exactly the same, but, and I think what we want to make sure is a progressive, you know, city that's really going down the path of looking at mobility different, looking at our S-CAP, looking at all the different things, making our city more walkable, making it more enjoyable, making it more accessible, especially with people that can't afford or don't want to drive an automobile, that we should be open to solicitations and not be so draconian for the fact that, you know, what we don't want to do is send a message like, hey, don't pitch anything to us, because we're just going to squash it unless we figure out every single detail, negotiate everything out. So part of this for me is it just looking at this one particular solicitation. To me, it's broader. I mean, Mogo, we didn't open anything open with Mogo and say, oh, well, how many other bike-share companies want to come or whatever? He says, it's a great idea, let's try it, let's move forward. It's been successful. So I think with this, I mean, we're talking, we can cancel it after day one. There's no capital improvements or physical dollars or cents contributed by the city, a little bit of time in monitoring, you know, they come in, we get some data, and that will inform what our ordinance looks like, and, you know, we can do that over the winter, you know, when they're not operating. And that would be applicable to everybody who wants to come. This is basically a trial period for the first mover that said, hey, Royal Oak, I think you're a desirable location. I'd love to, you know, try our system here. And, and oh, by the way, if it doesn't work and it's not successful, then I believe Bird knows that we're not, we'll probably create an ordinance that pretty much prohibits them. So they have every incentive to make it work if they're a business and interested in making money. And if they can't, you know, we hold the keys to, you know, our city, and we can decide who to lock in, who to lock out. So I guess I just don't see the, the debate. It's just throwing some scooters here. They got a customer base, they'll run it. We got problems. It's six weeks. It's in a low period, too. It's September, October, it's slower. So you get, you know, you don't have to worry about a mad craze of everyone grabbing a scooter. Seems like the perfect timing to me. I'm not committed to them. I'd just like to see what the data, I think this is a great opportunity, because I, I don't know that we would have another, we pass an ordinance and everything like that, people are going to come in and want longer-term contracts and all that stuff. And then you have a longer-term problem, like in some other contracts. So, I don't know. I don't see the big deal doing a trial, and especially if staff is recommending it. I think they thought it out. I don't have an issue with it, but that's me. So there's a motion on the table to deny. Any other discussion on it? Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate everything you've said. I, I think we'd still do all that. In fact, I would look forward to doing this in the spring, and, you know, that's why I asked the Bird representative, you know, would you work with us? that's why I asked the Bird representative, you know, would you work with us? Because I'd be, I'm also fine continuing to work with them to craft some ideas together. I think that we really just need to, you know, we know, there's some known issues with scooters. Now, and I think we can solve some of those, at least our attempt to, you know, designate some rideshare or some parking areas, designate some paths, making sure, you know, figuring out the signage on the sidewalks. Licensing, you know, there's a, there's a permit process we can go through, you know, so that every scooter costs $5 to register at the city. But that cost can go to picking up the new signs and paying up some of this enforcement stuff. So I think that there's some mechanisms, you know, there's a really good idea on the horizon here that we could be close to, that maybe we iron out a little bit between now and the spring. We could launch this in the spring and see how it goes before we would allow them maybe in the summer.
But you're going to be ironing it out without any information or data from a real test.
Well, you also have Oak Park, we have other cities who just launched also. We have friends in other municipalities.
Yeah, but they're not Royal Oak. They don't have the dynamics that we have. Like, like Mr. Fenton said, it worked in some cities, in Ann Arbor and Grand Rapids, it didn't.
Yeah.
You know? I want Royal Oak data. I won't push it. I mean, I don't, I don't care. I mean, I just think that, you know, if it is a viable option, it's going to be, I think, less viable without data. Okay. Any other discussion points on it? All right, the motion is to deny the contract proposal. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Five to two. Okay, so the contract is denied. So I guess the operator can come in, Mr. Fenton, if they want, until we get an ordinance. And then I think if they're anyone that wants to make a motion to move forward with an ordinance, to have staff draft an ordinance related to micro mobility, we should probably do it now because you just denied the contract. So therefore, we want, if you're, if we have concerns, we should articulate those concerns via an ordinance, would be my opinion. Commissioner Dubbuck?
I'll move to direct staff to begin drafting an ordinance to establish a licensing process for, what, scooter companies?
Micro mobility, I would say, be more generally.
All right, okay.
Because you're not, it's not just scooters, it could be a number of different things.
Micro mobility.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, that's my head.
Okay. It's more like a finger lift.
Sorry, Mr. Liao's head.
Okay. All right, we have a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Commissioner Colo?
I just want to make sure it's beyond the licensing also. It's the where do they park, what are the routes, what are the signage, you know, there's a lot that's encompassing in that, right? Correct, Commissioner Dubbuck?
Licensing regulation, that's what licensing is.
Okay.
How you operate, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. I mean, I think doing the ordinance and then to staff's judgment, if they feel there's other elements that need to be added to make it work in conjunction with or to make it successful, that should be added to, if that's, you know, in the licensing agreements, it says all the scooters have to be marked, no sidewalks. If it's, you know, signage downtown, which wouldn't really be part of the ordinance, but it would be, you know, the ordinance would say they're prohibited and if we have to put signage up, they would bring a proposal from, from Ms. Donahue's team, from engineering, to make some suggestions. I think it's all, the primary thing is the ordinance. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner passes. Okay. All right, now, we have item nine, which is the approval of the traffic committee resolutions. City Engineer Donahue is here to present the recommendations.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. I have recommendations tonight for you. I'm just going to get out of the Zoom call before I get in trouble. Okay. Thank you for your patience. So I'm here to bring you the recommendations from the traffic committee's July 26 meeting, which was chaired by Dan Goddick. I do have quite a few resolutions for your consideration tonight, so I will try to be very succinct. The first recommendation is from agenda item 6A. I do have some visual aids here. I don't know if Richard, if you're able to put them up on the screens, that might help. Our first recommendation is from agenda item 6A, and this is at 117 Northwest Street. It's a block of the city that only has one house and the remainder of the block consists of apartments and then just the DTE substation. Back in 2017, the commission approved signage on that block that allowed on-street parking in some areas and no overnight parking allowed anywhere. And that was requested back then by the no advertising firm, which is just south of here. They wanted to have more parking options for their customers and for their employees. So currently, as it sits, there's no overnight parking allowed on the street and there's no parking on Sherman Drive, which is the only nearby street for this house. The driveway for this home can only fit one vehicle without extending over the sidewalk. So the committee here is recommending that we sign this for permit parking, really just for one space immediately adjacent to the home. So that still leaves the remainder of street parking for other people visiting the advertising firm or whatever businesses in the area.
Where are you going?
While, while still having a space for this homeowner. The second recommendation is from agenda item 6B. That's related to pavement striping on Benjamin Avenue, just north of 13 Mile Road. Here, the petitioner requested that the left turn lane be shortened in order to allow for more on-street parking on Benjamin in front of the townhomes that are on the east side of the street. This is similar to what was in place prior to the road reconstruction project in 2019. We did perform a traffic study and determined that the left turn lane could be shortened without impacting traffic flows there. And so we are recommending restripping, as shown, I do have a diagram, but it's not popping up. So, but basically just shortening, shortening it so that you can fit two to three car lengths in the turn lane. Next, we have agenda item 6C. This is located on Windermere Avenue, just east of Crooks. The north side of Windermere right now is currently signed for no parking, but the petitioner claims that vehicles often park on the north side anyways, all the way up to the stop sign that's at Crooks, possibly because the first no parking sign is located about 150 feet east of that stop sign and is slightly obstructed by trees. So the committee is recommending at this location that we just add another no parking sign on the north side of the road closer to the stop sign to clarify that that is a no parking zone. We did have item 6D, but the committee wanted to table that and ask for some additional data, so I'll bring that back in the future. Moving on to item 6E, we had a request to make the intersection of Derby and Marywood Drive a four-way stop because of the speeding concerns on Marywood Drive. So I have the neighborhood image here with the circle location in question, and then the stop signs all over the neighborhood are shown in red. At this location, we're not recommending stop signs as a measure for speed control. In general, we never recommend them for speed control. We did do a study just to make sure there weren't any other warrants for a stop sign at the location. We did find that the 85th percentile speed on Marywood Drive was only 21 miles per hour and that there were no other warrants met here for a stop signs. And that's based on traffic volume, crash history and sight distance. So no changes are recommended at this location. 6F is a little bit of a new item here. We had a visually impaired person request audible pedestrian signals at three intersections, and I circled them on the map here. They're at Main and Normandy, Crooks and Normandy, and then at Beaumont and 13 Mile Road. In the past, Royal Oak has shied away from these types of signals. They've had a pretty negative reputation of being very loud and very disturbing to nearby businesses and residents. But when we started to research this a little bit further, we learned that technology has come quite a ways over the few, last few years. You can now install volume controlled signals and you have the option to turn them off for periods of the day, like overnight. There will always be a locator tone and that's a very quiet beeping sound. So you really only hear it if you're next to it so that you could, if you were not able to see, find the button with the visual cues, I'm sorry, with the auditory cues. The walk voice that you might hear in other downtown areas that tell you you can walk across the street, that would only turn on if somebody pushed the button to cross the road. So if no one's there, it's just going to not make any noise. They're relatively expensive. They're about $15,000 to install per location or per intersection. So at this point, the committee is recommending that we install audible pedestrian signals just at one location as a pilot program. And then if that's successful, if we don't have any major complaints, we could start looking at expanding that to higher volume areas of the city or higher pedestrian volume areas, particularly in the downtown or near schools. We are already doing pedestrian upgrades at the intersection of Crooks and Normandy, here kind of in the middle. And that's under the C-MAC signal project. And of the three locations that were specifically requested here, it does seem to be the best location to try because it's close to businesses, close to some residential properties, and also close to the high school. So a fair amount of pedestrians are going around that intersection. If approved, we can add the audible signals as a change order to the contract and probably get them installed this fall. The requister also had a complaint about the traffic signal that's at Beaumont Hospital on 13 Mile Road, saying it's difficult to exit the allergy center, which is across from Beaumont on the north side of the road, because the signal is not facing that direction. There is a traffic conflict here primarily for the western driveway, which is the one kind of shown to the left here. The building and driveways have been in place here since the 1960s, based on aerial photographs. So we've never really had that opportunity to change the configuration here. But that driveway makes no sense. It's in the middle of an intersection. It's not great. So the traffic signal at Beaumont, here, it's not really designed to serve the allergy center and people leaving it. And drivers really should only be turning right out of that driveway during the green phase for 13 Mile. Again, if the property is ever redeveloped, we would probably ask that that driveway be eliminated to the west. But at this point, the committee, as a kind of stopgap solution, is recommending installation of a right turn only sign at the driveway so that drivers at least know not to try and make a very dangerous left out of there. Moving on to item 6G, we had a request from the planning commission to evaluate parking and traffic impacts on West Fifth Street as a result of the new Hop Cat restaurant that's planned at the northwest corner of Fifth and Main. The proposed takeout door for the, for the restaurant is immediately adjacent to the garage doors for the Skyloffs parking deck. And Skyloffs is, of course, all the tenant spaces above the proposed restaurant. We had the most public comment at the meeting on this item. It became clear pretty quickly that this is already a very serious problem for people that live in Skyloffs, not just a perceived problem that might happen because of Hop Cat. They're already having a lot of issues there, mainly people who are parking in front of the garage doors. They think they'll be there for five minutes, they'll go pick up food, and then people can't get out and go where they need to go from the Skyloffs garage. They know that people are consistently parking illegally on the north side of Fifth Street and they see it during the dinner rush, which makes sense. So right now, Fifth is signed for no parking on the north side of the road and there's a loading zone signage on the south side of the road. There's space to fit one or two vehicles on the north side of Fifth, technically, but allowing it would create a sight distance issue for people exiting the Skyloffs garage. So we don't really recommend signing that for actual metered parking. And instead, kind of enforcing the no parking area by changing over the signs to be the no stopping, standing or parking signs, and also painting the curb yellow. The loading zone on the south side was previously designated for the old Barnes and Noble bookstore that was there. They had a lot of deliveries. It's really not needed anymore for the businesses that are there. So getting to this location to park, however, because our, our thought was, let's let people park here on the south side so they can go get their takeout and not, you know, impact the people of Skyloffs. To do that, though, you have to basically drive west and do a U-turn or do a three-point turn. It's not exactly ideal, but it is a place where you could park for, you know, a quick pickup. So for that reason, the committee does not recommend designating them as parking stalls, but rather signing them for 15-minute parking, violators will be towed, just a quick pickup point, which does seem to be an issue in the downtown. So maybe if we had at least a few spots dedicated for that. In addition to these recommendations, the committee is recommending that the DDA consider widening the sidewalk on the north side of the road as a future project to help eliminate the standing room, I'll call it. I have kind of an image here on the northbound side. I mean, the lane on the north side is 18 and a half feet. That's huge. We only need 11 feet, 10 feet works too. So potentially bumping out the sidewalk and making it more of a pedestrian-friendly zone, hangout area. I know there's proposals to do that on Fifth Street further west of here. So this might be a nice add-on future project for them to consider. In addition to that, they are also, the committee is also recommending that we install basically like soft bollards. They're called delineators. You'll see them in bike lanes in Ferndale and Oak Park. They're, you know, nothing's going to happen to your car if you hit it probably, but the idea is that if you put them in line with the columns of the garage, maybe we can stop cars from parking right out in front of these doors so that the tenants have a way to get out. So that's all the recommendations for that item. There was quite a few on that one. 6H is related to the curve section of Coolidge Highway between 13 Mile and Woodward. We had a petitioner who was in a very serious car accident caused by a semi-truck who off-tracked into the next lane and basically sandwiched her. Staff evaluated the turning radius and the off-tracking width that's required for the lanes there in order for various sized trucks to traverse the curve safely without off-tracking into the next lane. And we were somewhat surprised to see that the lanes are not wide enough there to accommodate most semi-trucks. There's only been three recorded crashes in a 10-year period related to truck off-tracking. Also somewhat surprising, we thought we might see more based on, on the numbers that we got. My guess is that there's probably a lot of near misses or people just know to stay away from trucks as they're going around a curve and backing off. At this location, widening would be the best option. Widening that roadway into the median under a future project would be great, but it's not something we can do overnight. So knowing that there's a safety concern here, the committee does not recommend waiting until roadway could be performed. And so therefore, the recommendation is to install signage that directs trucks to turn at 13 Mile Road. And I have some signs, locations here as shown. Just to advise them as they're heading southbound on Coolidge, when you get to 13 Mile, if you've got a big trailer, you need to turn, you can go left or right. And then we'll repeat that again at Coolidge, or I'm sorry, at 13 Mile. And then they also recommend installing a second 15 mile per hour sign in the median of southbound Coolidge. The committee also recommended evaluation of the existing concrete barrier. This came up during our discussion at the meeting. There's this old concrete barrier here that's on the curve. We did review this after the meeting and we are recommending removal of that barrier. It's not shielding anything that significantly can't lean close to the road. There used to be a sidewalk that went right along back of curb, but when the CVS was built, that got changed and made much more safe. So there's really no reason, and you look at it, it's pretty beat up, it's, it's getting hit when it probably could be a safe off point in an emergency situation. So we're recommending removal of that barrier as well. Okay, last item. 6I was a request to install convex mirrors at the railroad viaduct on Catalpa. And this was to assist drivers turning from Maxwell, turning left off of Maxwell. We did do a sight distance analysis. It showed that there was adequate sight distance there for drivers turning from Maxwell, and so no changes were recommended for that location. One final note, we need to update our bylaws as the traffic committee, and that technically has to be done by resolution. Fairly minor changes, we just wanted to update the new city hall address in our bylaws because it still has the old one. And then we're also wishing to change the timing of the meetings to just say that they'll be held in the evenings every other month so that we have the flexibility to go to 6:30 or 7:30, you know, depending on who's on the committee at the time. I think that's everything. I'll take any questions.
Questions for City Engineer Donahue, Commissioner Dubbuck?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. You guys did a lot of work.
Yeah, it was a busy one.
Yeah. So I, you know, I've looked through all these. I have no issues with your recommendations, but I just want to clarify a couple of things. One, it looks like every one of these recommendations was unanimously approved.
Correct.
It looks like you had seven out of eight members present.
Mm-hmm.
Do any of these recommendations in any way conflict with staff's recommendation?
I don't think so. I think the Fifth Street one, we added to that, like the pylons or the bollards, I'll call them, weren't part of our original recommendation, but that came up through discussion. I think that was the only one where there was a somewhat significant addition, but they didn't go against any of our recommendations.
Okay. And do you have concerns about the bollards as recommended by the committee?
I think they'll get hit. I think Mr. Filipski might not like them as much because there'll probably be some maintenance associated. But I don't, it's a small investment to try something out that might fix a big problem for these people. So if they don't work, you can always just take them out. It's not too difficult.
Okay. I also noted, yeah, that's the only issue where really public came out to speak to it.
Yeah.
And otherwise, we're basically making
Strongly, yes.
And otherwise, we're basically making an accommodation for the petitioner that seems reasonable as recommended by staff.
Mm-hmm.
So just about everything here is meeting some need that a resident brought forward?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move for approval of all these recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Duba, second by Commissioner Prush. Discussion, Commissioner Hunt?
I did have one question for howling, or standing. For 6C, you're recommending to put a no-parking sign 30 feet away from the stop sign. There's already one 150 feet away. Is this a replacement of that 150-foot sign? Or is it in addition to? Because that can get confusing.
Good question. Thank you for clarifying that. We'll keep the one that's 150 feet existing. It's sort of in the residential area, and it just, it's not clear. So this would just be another sign just to further instruct drivers that you can't park there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Did I not answer the question right?
No, no, it does. I just feel like it could be confusing with two signs saying, "Don't park here." And I'd never really seen cars parked near, I walk up and down that street daily, and I've never seen really cars parked close to the stop sign, so.
I agree. We visited that probably five times throughout the month that we were studying this, and I never saw it, but, you know. It's not going to hurt to tell people they can't park there, so.
It is not, so, thank you.
Sure.
I have a quick question as well. Commissioner Cole, I called it myself before you, but I'll break breaks here. So when it comes to the situation on Fifth Street, actually, I think we, when we were talking about actually the, I think it was that planning, wasn't it? When they came up their site plan for this, that lane is absolutely, I mean, ginormous, right? 18 feet, whatever it is.
Yeah.
In the short term, are there, and I think we talked about paint maybe, but, you know, is there any desire, ability, and maybe even if the association wishes to do it at their option in maintenance, to put like a few flower planters there, low-line planters that they could manage or whatever? Is that a bad idea? You know, something in the short term before the sidewalk gets bumped out many, many years from now, is there something that could be aesthetically pleasing, you know, add a little niceness to the area, and, you know, help solve a problem at the same time? When I'm in Europe, I see these big, huge planners that really force people to follow certain traffic patterns, you know? Slows them down, but also where they don't want you to park, they slop these or plop these planners in. Just a thought, not sure what your feelings are on it.
I get a little nervous about stuff like that in the right of way because somebody hits it, knocks it over. They're not crash-worthy. I don't think people are going 45 miles an hour down here where we're going to have a fatality, but my first inclination is, we don't really have those in the street anywhere else. It could be a maintenance issue. I'm not totally opposed to it at first thought, but I'd also like to think about it more.
Maybe even those like parking spot bump outs, you know? I don't know. I'm just, you know, because even if you paint it, people are going to ignore it. You know what I mean? And then we have an enforcement issue. But if you put like some small little barrier there that won't cause an accident, you know what I mean? Something.
Miles well.
A bag of nails. No, I'm just kidding. It's not so nice.
It would really.
But something there, you know, maybe it's not a planner, maybe it's, you know, you know the parking, like when you, your wheel hits the parking spot, maybe you turn those parallel with the street or something. I don't know. I mean, that might look gaudy, but just if there's any ideas there, I think that to your discretion, I would imagine this, and with the assistance of the association there, you know, they might be open to do something as long as it's safe. Just a thought. I wouldn't have any issues with trying something like that. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. So, you know, I think the conversation and what we're going to do on Fifth here isn't over yet. There's a lot of, I mean, we had a long discussion this year, too, about parking here and, you know, potentially making this like a pick-up and drop-off zone for Ubers and for Grubhubs and any other type of rideshare. I'm not sure the three spots we've allocated right now are enough, but I think this is a good start, and it's only paint, right? Like this is, you know, we have a parking study coming up that will help inform some future decisions. The DDA is doing some really cool wayfinding and place-making right now. This could definitely be a consideration for. So while this isn't like my first choice of what I thought we might see here, it's definitely a step in the right direction. And I think, I hope, though, that staff continues to work, though, that, you know, this, I don't think this is the end game. I think it's definitely like a step in the right direction. And as we kind of think about downtown and how we park there, we should, you know, I would also be in favor, I know that there was some pushback to this, of making this a one-way street, you know, one way to the west, so you have to loop around the building, but then you can use more, you can get in more parking spaces there. I mean, if we could really make this a corridor where this is a pick-up and drop-off zone and get more than one car in it, you know, three cars in. So, you know, a lot of options here. I, you know, I think, you know, I thank the committee for what they came up with, and just, I hope we keep on thinking about it.
Anybody else? All right, motion on the table. Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. This brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight, which is discussion of downtown outdoor ice rink agreement. Mr. Brake or Mr. Fenton?
It will be me.
It'll be you.
So, good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the city commission. This discussion is not so much about the actual agreement, but I think this is a precursor. If you recall, at the previous city commission meeting in July, there were three conditions that were set and to move this forward. And wanted to give you an update on those three and some additional information. And we're going to show some pictures as well, but I'll clue Ms. Davids when she'll put that up on the screen. So the three conditions start out with that there would be a sponsorship from the DDA. So we had the DDA board directors meeting last week. They were agreeable. Originally, it was set at $100,000. There was an amended amount of $125,000, and of those that were there in membership proved that unanimously that were present at that meeting. So that contingency was satisfied. The next item is that the promoter is able to secure a sponsorship and $100,000. He has not been able to do that, but has given assurances, but that's only been conveyed verbally. So we don't know what that means, but just to give you an update in that regard. So the third, which is a little bit more involved to describe, is to have sufficient electricity provided by DTE that can power the chillers and compressors and everything else, the components that are associated with the rink. And our contact with DTE is that what they've informed us and what the technical staff, what DPS has confirmed, is that the power source from a transformer that really feeds the entire area is a single transformer. It's along Troy Street. It's a large box that probably most of us pass by every day and don't even realize, but it's a pretty sizable box. It does have sufficient power that can be drawn from that that can meet the needs. So what DTE requires, and we need to move very quickly, is that they would provide its secondary transformer off of that. And so they, at the moment, they do not have that type of transformer. There are some that are ordered, and that they anticipate that they will arrive in September. It's a unique type of transformer. I won't talk very, very specific sort of information, but what I've been told is that it's not a common use. This is a commercial type of transformer. So it's DTE, although they cannot guarantee it. They said because of the uniqueness that we have a pretty good chance that we could get this transformer. So, okay. So what DTE does not do is that when they place a transformer, wherever the location of that, to make the connection with the wiring that goes underneath, because all the wiring is, everything's underground. They do not put up telephone poles. They do not do things overhead, so that you have to bore beneath to make that connection. So a contractor has to perform that work to make that connection to the transformer. At this point, DTE has given us an estimate, just for their portion alone, for this additional transformer is in the range of about $25,000 to $35,000. So for our sake of discussion, we'll say about $30,000 to add that additional component. What is needed is a distributor panel, and I'm going to rattle off a few things because this, it gets pretty crowded, and we'll show you a visual sort of effect what this will look like. So this would enable us to draw, the transformer, you can't make a direct connection to it. The power has to be where it enables that you can make the commercial sort of connections. It's an 800-watt type of distributor that can feed directly into the rink, the chillers and that are associated with that, because it's dry and a considerable amount of power. But on top of that, if there is any other use where you would have a 120 sort of connection, you can't enable that through this distributor. What you then need is another transformer that's connected to the distributor that's connected to the large transformer. And this is what's called a 200-step-down amp transformer that you can make those sort of connections. On top of that, there is a panel that's used to switch all of that. So why am I talking all about this? Essentially, we're going to be creating an electrical substation in the middle of the park, and I want to show you, I'm going to ask Ms. Davids if it's possible that we have done a little bit of a Photoshop and to show you what exactly are we talking about, the size of these transformers. Now, would they be exposed like this? No. If we move forward with this, it would have screening around it, but nevertheless, it would change the sightline of the park. And I wanted to show this in dimension in relation to people. Here's one picture. Here's another one of our intern. Go back to Jeremy. So these stand between five and six feet tall, and this gives you a pretty good idea of what these items look like. There is a barrier that needs to be encompassed, and I'll show you the next picture, and it's an approximate area of anywhere from 20 feet by 10 by this area of 20 by 15. So Ms. Davids measured this out, and you can see that the approximate area that's there. Do all of these utility boxes need to be in one location? The answer is no. But the transformer.
So why do you draw them like that?
So, but let me finish this thought. What the electrical contractors who have not given us bid, but have given us a rough estimate, is estimating, just for their work alone, of $85,000 to $100,000. And then it's the most simplified sort of arrangement where you put all of the utilities clustered together in that one corner of that park. Why are we picking that one part that is the shortest distance to that transformer that's along Troy Street? You have to have it within this area of the lawn that can make that connection because we cannot have any cables. So the, with this distributor that I mentioned before, that the chillers and the rest of the equipment would be plugged directly into that, and there wouldn't be any conflicts of any cables there. So could the transformer, if you look in other areas, for instance, where the splash pad is, all the mechanicals are off to the side. They're practically adjacent to Third Street. And in fact, walking by them, you wouldn't even know they exist, other than that they're nicely screened and they're off to the side. Can you separate the transformer from the distributor? And the answer is yes, but the cost goes up exponentially. The reason being is that when you're, the electricity that is coming through, that you need a much larger cable because the current diminishes the greater the distance that separates them out. So for making, being upfront about this and what the visual impact is to the park of, this is something that would be a permanent change to the park. So along those lines, I wanted to, there was a comment that was made in public comment, and I can tell you, during the DDA meeting, there was some trepidations that some of the DDA members, that everyone is on board. It's not a case of anyone being against an ice rink. It's the location that individuals have brought up. Mr. Pinsky, that came up to the podium this evening. I didn't receive the information until late in the day. I didn't want to amend the agenda. We will have that on so we can, what was conveyed from the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee will be part of the record, and it'll be in the following meeting. Again, to reiterate what he described in the meeting minutes, that was provided to me is that, again, that advisory board, they're very much in favor of outdoor recreation, but against the location. And that was the unanimous vote that was taken by that board and was asked to be conveyed to you. So I'm sharing this information to you so we know exactly what we're doing. The other problem, and probably the most significant underlying issue, DTE is not a problem. With the electricians, if they can find this, I have to keep going back to my note. Eventually, I'll be very well-versed in speaking electricity. This distribution panel, this 800 distribution panel, or even the other step-down transformers that you can connect 120 volt, we are not certain that we can have that in time. By virtue of that the electrical contractors have not been able to give us a bid is because they haven't been able to find a supplier that can provide those in time for the event. So there's a couple of options here. We could still proceed with that, cross our fingers, hope for the best, and proceed. They may show up prior to when we need them in November. They may not show up until we're a month and a half into this. We just don't know at this point. In that arrangement, if we still wanted to proceed, is that we would be looking at a diesel generator to fill that gap, either on a temporary or for the duration. And the cost of the fuel, look at my notes real quick. I want to say that the fuel cost for the diesel fuel, if we run that continuously, meaning just during the operations of the rink itself, would be about $21,000 a month. We had an estimate, I believe, of $20,000 for the cost of electricity for that three-month period. So if we're going to proceed with this, we need to make application with DTE very quickly. We don't know with the contractor. We've also contacted MKSK if they can help us with the screening. I still want to pursue, the park was not designed with the intent of having a substation in the middle of it.
Right.
These type of utilities are usually, they're off to the side. You're not even aware of them. Again, I kind of use the splash pad as a very good example. Sometime, if you're walking by there, there's the slatted wood fence that's by it, and it's very nicely done, and probably for the people that are using it have no idea how the functionality of this. Whereas an item like this, this is where I want to show you visualization as opposed to going ahead and constructing this and having someone walk by and go, "Oh, my gosh, what are you doing?" And so that's why I asked staff to put together, so you could see this Photoshop, what are we looking at, and kind of pause before we proceed further. Do we take that chance? There's probably a good chance that we will be using the diesel generator part of the time. I, this evening, I was hoping to give you a pretty firm answer to know that, yes, we have all the pieces of the puzzle that we have fit together. We do not at this time, and I'm not certain how quickly we will find out. Again, not to get further bogged down, here's another issue, since we're talking about making $100,000. making 100,000 likely of just the electric sort of improvements, there's a couple of routes that we go. Our purchasing policies require that once we trigger over 25,000 that we have to go out for a bid. We could go the route that the contract with the general contractor for the park has not been closed and treat this as a change order and that we just simply deal or work with our existing electrical contractor, which is Motor City Electric. It would speed up the process, but if the commission wishes that we go through the bidding process, then along with making this application to DTE, we're going to have to move pretty quickly. And again, we're adding additional time to this process. I don't know if we will have this completed and I'm not trying to talk you out of this, but I'm just laying this all out. This is what we've discovered since this previous meeting and all the information that we have in front of us. So last but not least, we were talking about that, what the margin of what our financial exposure is. From a budgetary perspective, what we will need to do is to budget the entire amount. We're up to about 500 to 550,000 and offset with the revenues that were projected. So just be aware of that from a budgeting perspective and how we will proceed. We hope that our exposure is that the dollar amount that we spoke about before, but the financial liability is back in the city organization. We do have the sponsorships, we have other sponsorships that are coming in and it appears favorable, but just be aware of that. That's how the mechanics of that works. So I'm laying a lot of information out there, but this is where we're at at this point. But from a staff perspective, we're not talking contract, but we do need some direction. Is this something that you're okay with, number two? And thirdly, is this something that we should go out to bid or is there a comfort level that we go to Colasani O'Brien and we talk about a, doing a, an amendment to the open contract in order to conduct this work? And lastly, is this something that you're comfortable with, that there's a probability, possibility that we can end up having to use a generator a part of the time or the entire duration of the outdoor rink? So.
Well, you know, first off, thank you for all the legwork on this. I had a couple of questions just to make sure for clarity, which are probably some questions folks have, but there might be a little bit more technical. So clearly the optics of that in the corner, you know, to me is a big issue. So I guess my questions, first off, what I understand is that the special transformer, we should have a good chance of getting it and nothing's for sure.
Yes.
That could be positioned anywhere on the property, but it's the 800 watt sort of secondary transformer that has to be at, you know, a direct connection to the, let's say the ice rink in this case.
That is correct, but realize that when you move the two apart from one of the transformer to the distributor, we don't know what that cost is. And what DTE, and I'll quote an email that was sent to me, this was, it came from DTE, they said that's an astronomical account, cost. Now, that's not to be said that it can't be done. They relayed an example of Royal Oak Schools, I don't know what the particular was, but something similar, but they couldn't have the two together and they were able to make it work. But, you know, the price tag, you know-
Yeah, but cost aside, because we don't have that number to look at. Astronomical could be 5,000 for them and astronomical to us would be 20,000. I don't know.
I agree, I agree. So, but if I can defer to Mr. Flipsky because he also worked on this as well.
Yeah, I'll just add to that comment that not only is the cost astronomical, DTE is not inclined to permit it. Their planner, they're not keen to that for a number of reasons. So that would take some convincing on that part beyond cost.
And then the other question is, okay, since this would be, you know, a temporary installation of an ice rink, is there a temporary option where we could put this equipment out, you know, maybe on a pad and then take it out with the ice rink when it goes down? Because if you're not using it, I mean, I don't want to say it's as simple as unplugging it and lifting it away, but is that an option as well?
Likely not, and here's the reason why. You'd have to string cables and everything has to be done underground. So-
Then you'd have all of that done, but the actual boxes themselves that have all the thing, can you do a disconnect, pop them out?
We could explore, but you're probably looking at something that's pretty expensive.
Yeah, I would doubt that. Now, there is the option for a portable, the step down transformer, if they wanted to have 120 power, let's say in the future, you wanted to be able to power up tents and things for small appliances, that there's a portable option for, but not something as large as the primary transformer. Not that I've seen or come across, but we can look.
Okay, so you have two of them that have to be close together and then the one that the 200, I think you said 200 amp, that does the 120 volt, that one's not a necessity, that one could be portable. So you just have the two that have to be together, maybe could be separated, but that would take some convincing to DTE.
Yes, you have that correct.
And then the cost, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, if we made 10 million dollars on this and it was a million, of course we'd do it, but we don't know the numbers so we can't, you know, come to the determination on that.
And I might add that portable 120 volt unit, that is impacted by supply chain and you're probably not looking until the end of summer next year before we could obtain one of those. So we would try our best to get the 800, that distributor, but the step down 120 is, looks pretty bleak.
So the next thing we talked about was, early on, we all kind of wrote off the diesel generator and saw some questions. Yes, it sounds like it's 21,000 a month to power it based on a whole myriad of factors, right? It's really, really cold, maybe you don't need it, you know, if it's really warm, maybe you're constantly, you know, messing with the ice. What is the footprint of that? Where would we put it and how like burden sum is it to the environment there? I mean, is it just like a rattling generator or are they quiet or is it something that with piped music and stuff like that, you wouldn't hear it? I don't know. Like what's the, what's the opinion on that?
It would be the equivalent to what was there in the farmer's market parking lot last year.
Okay, which I didn't really notice. I don't know if you guys noticed, but I didn't notice it, but maybe I wasn't paying attention. Maybe I was trying to wrangle too many kids.
So it's a sizable footprint. Where we put it, any number of places, I guess. But I think in that environment, it would be a little more disruptive to Henry Ford to have it running outside of there. I mean, that's my view.
I mean, you can hear it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, those are my initial questions. I'll have the commission ask a couple of questions and then I want to, since Mr. Witz is here tonight, I know last time we kind of jumped into a motion. I know since he has a stake in this, I'd like to hear from him as well. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Frank, do you have any architectural drawings or any engineered drawings to show us tonight?
No.
Okay, so we just have this photoshopped image?
Yes.
Okay.
But it gives you a pretty good visual representation.
I don't think it does. I kind of, I'd rather have something from a professional. No offense to the city manager's office, y'all aren't professionals in where this needs to go, what the options are. I think that we need to see from a professional what we might have. And that's why, you know, we kind of have like standing, you know, we had a motion and resolution and we had direction here to A, B, C, and D, and now we're at B. So I guess short of a commissioner on the prevailing side calling for a recall of the motion that prevailed, I don't know how we would stop this tonight. I would think that we're kind of looking for you to keep on going forward with the plan we laid in motion. And the next step I would think would be to get plans and not just stop and say, they might go here, here's a field of flags, I'm going to pit a generator right in the middle of it. I mean, that is-
Well, this is coming from our electrical contractor is that the location we've walked, this area, if you want us to have engineered drawings, then, you know, you're adding another delay and-
I would presume that the building department would need engineer drawings before we did anything. And that's the next step is to figure out where everything would go. And I don't think that we've hit that step tonight. We haven't really looked to see, I mean, you had said that it could be in, these items don't need to be together, yet we haven't seen a drawing of anything where these items weren't really put together to look bulky. So I would rather see all the options before us, before, I don't know, I mean, there's no resolution before us tonight, there's no action that was in the packet. So I would want to see some professional drawings before we made any, if we were to change course, I'd like a professional drawing on that.
Well, we will defer to the collective wisdom to the group. So it's, you know, this is our contractor that we've worked with and that where they've identified the route that construction wise, that to bore beneath and the shortest amount of distance is that corner and to bring that in that grassy area. If you start modifying that and for an aesthetic sort of purposes, wholeheartedly I would endorse that, but then you're looking at those sort of modifications. And like I said before, if you separate the two out, we don't know what the costs are and likely it will go up considerably. And a minimum, we're already up to 130,000.
So let's find out the cost. I think that's what we're asking here. Let's find out the cost.
So, and the contractor is working on the estimate and they have not submitted it to us because they have not been able to secure the distributor at this point. That's what's keeping them from giving us a firm proposal. So they haven't found a provider that can guarantee that they can have that distributor in time for the construction, so.
Mr. Douglas.
So two things here. One is, we set three conditions at the July 25th meeting for this. One was that the DDA would provide at least 100,000. That condition has been met. One was that there would, the promoter would bring in 100,000 in sponsorships. That has not been met. And the other was that DTE would, I mean, I'm looking at the motion, direct connection of power from DTE. We didn't set any cost limits on that and I think our assumption was that DTE would somehow donate that. Certainly not cost us, what are we at here?
Their cost would be 30,000. Then they would not perform the work to make the connection. And that's the estimate that came from Motor City Electric. They said it'd be counted and arranged from 85,000 to 100,000.
Okay, so we're at over 100,000 for electrical supply and equipment. And my sense of the commission at the time was that we were pretty conservative about this. I mean, we were very tentative, I was very tentative about it. And I feel like what we have here in front of us is way more than, I mean, I was interested in having us do, I was reluctant to begin with, so I'll say that. You know, I disagree with Commissioner Colo's beliefs that we should have a more sophisticated, more detailed drawing here. I'm satisfied with the approximate nature of what the staff have been able to show us. So, but I'm going to ask this question and I see Mr. Witz, I feel terrible for you. Why have we not talked about artificial ice? I mean, I know this is not, you know, the NHL or Disney on Ice, it's just a bunch of eight-year-olds slipping around and falling down. Why are we not talking about an artificial surface?
As a first generation American and-
Oh, he pulls the, he plays the Canadian doll?
As the grandson, a great grandson of a professional hockey player, I'll try not to comment too much on that, but there is a big difference, but it's a fair question for the use and purpose.
The idea for us as the city for paying for this is not for, is marginally for the winter fest, but so that our residents can enjoy skating throughout the course of the winter. And of course, with an artificial service, you know, they can enjoy it from October to April if we so choose. I mean, it seems to me we could provide a modest benefit for our citizens at a much lower cost. We still have the issue of protecting the sod or restoring the sod and I'm sympathetic to Mr. Rapinski's comments today, but it just seems like we're, you know, there are alternatives here other than the very onerous one that the city manager has described.
I'm going to, I think those, it's a fair question to ask at a point where I'd ask Mr. Witz if he's willing to come up and talk a little bit about some of those thoughts and maybe talk a little bit about the revenue numbers since we've mentioned cost numbers and things like that, maybe give us an update from your answer.
We graduated to a canyon, I would try it, so that's the whole. So let me start with Commissioner Douglas's question.
We have had experience with artificial ice. We produced the Hockey Town Winter Classic in Detroit and there was not a strong use visuals, connectability to that. And I think you lose visual and experience and our recommendation would be to not, you know, certainly go in that direction and it wouldn't be applicable for the Winter Blast as well. But I agree that there are two, you know, that there are separate interests that we were trying to merge together with the idea of bringing the skating rink in. I wanted to touch on a couple of issues that have been, you know, said and certainly address the financials a little bit. First, I say this with the utmost respect that I am trying to understand when I pledged to both the city attorney and the city manager that the 100,000 has been guaranteed by us. Okay? It's not, it's not in doubt. I guaranteed it. I've had verbal commitments to a point and I've made it clear that if we don't meet that, we would cover it. So it's of grave concern to me that it's presented to you as if that 100,000 is not there because that is absolutely there. We guarantee it 100%. I said we'd put it in Reining, we'd sign off on it. So that money is there. So I'd just like to correct the record and wish that it would be presented as was, I presented it to them, is that we guaranteed that money 100%. And that's so, and I'm willing to go beyond that. I do think the issue, I do think the issue at hand is the visuals and, you know, I think the, and I'll go back to the financials in a second, but I think the issue is the visual of that. And I think the part that is, I think the location, I would agree from our research with electrical contractors and DTE, that that location as presented, you know, we have a little debate on the overall size from sources I've spoken with, but the location is the sound location for it. And I think what is not being presented or discussed is the fact that you could do something both horticulturally or artistically or an arts project and could create something, you know, as an opportunity and an investment and create something artistic around it and have it, you know, serve a purpose. But I can't dispute the location, you know, and, you know, again, not quite the size, but, you know, I think I would, I would concur, you know, with the, you know, with the city, you know, on that. On the bidding and the financial exposure, when we went to the, and met with the city manager, assistant city manager, this was presented as, you know, this is a lot of money, we'll present it to the commission, but this is your baby. We don't have time to do the bidding process. You go out and make this happen, you know, ask for the money, create that. We did put a substantial amount for power in, not enough, as we went back to the city and agreed, but we were going to arrange the, you know, for all the expenses and make sure that they happen under the city's approval of, you know, of what the plans would be. So, you know, that is available and can be done and we've certainly dealt with electrical contractors in significant ways. And we've also heard from DTE from all the discussion of what this, that the burrowing from one transformer to the other is a very standard thing that happens very often and, you know, is something that is done, you know, often to connect a source of power, you know, to the other source of power. That gets to overall cost. You know, that would be, so the overall cost, if the power, if the power exceeds or gets into, you know, the higher number of the, you know, 500, 550 and you deduct, you know, the 100,000 in sponsorship at 400,000. 500, 550, and you deduct, you know, the $100,000 in sponsorship at 450, and the $100,000, and $125,000 from the, you know, from the DDA, 325, you know, then you're dealing with the revenues from the rink and then the city's contribution. So, we've done some research as, that has come to part as to what the revenues have been in Detroit, and I think there's a significant opportunity. And again, because I believe in this project, as you guys can tell from some of the passion here, is that, you know, I, we're certainly, you know, willing to try and step up or help or guarantee, you know, that we think this is going to work and step up a little bit. I just, I don't think this should be a financial issue, and I think, I think it's an issue of whether this looks good, whether this can look good and satisfy, you know, satisfy things. Because if it's a matter of, you know, the dollar's not quite working out, I'm open to a creative solution to take some more responsibility, just because I believe in it. And, you know, I believe in making this happen, and I felt like, you know, there've been forces, you know, some, you know, some of, you know, very sincere nature, and others, you know, that have, you know, that have just been stuff that I haven't understood. And, you know, I'm willing to step up and meet some of the responsibility when it gets down to the brass tacks of this, and to demonstrate, you know, our commitment to how well I think this will do for the city and how great of an opportunity it is. I think my motives sometimes get questioned, so I would like to, you know, help silence those or discuss, you know, how the finances can work if you can get through the other issue. The last thing I would say is, I think one thing that's being missed in this power situation that has not been brought up, is that you have a permanent solution for future power. The cost of the power in the future, whatever it is in year one, the cost of the power in the future from our research with local ice rinks will run $4,000 a month, $3,000 a month, and be clean, you know, for the perpetuity if this works out to something that people would like. So it's a one-time investment. If you choose to do a summer concert, if you choose to do future events where something, you know, would be needed, you would not have to bring in a generator, and you have the upgrade to the park, you know, of something that, you know, would be there. So if the rink does work out, this cost goes away, you have a much better situation. So, to give you an example of just the financials that I was talking about, and I'm not sure I should be sharing this information, but just to give an idea, during the prime season of the rink in Detroit, I projected $140,000, $50,000 during the whole process of revenue for skating and rentals. In one week in Detroit during prime season, that number's exceeded in one week. So there's some very good upsides that we would help, you know, back if the value of the idea of knowing that this was a permanent structure was not sufficient financially. So to me, I think this goes back to, can you create something that covers this, and create something that, you know, is consistent with the park, or is the impetus for an arts project for the Royal Oak Arts Commission, or something that I think would really fit in well? I think that's really the, you know, the issue, because I'm here committed to show everybody financially that we will step up and help. And again, I certainly want to clarify the sponsorship point, that that was, I think, a guarantee by the party that we'd live up to it. I mentioned I had verbal commitments, and, you know, we guarantee the money, and I made that specifically clear. And we'll go further than that, you know, just because we believe in it. So I just would hope it's not a financial issue, because I think the revenues are high. You have a future use of this power source for clean energy for the rink in the future. And, you know, the question is, what is it a core? Last thing I'll say, and if there's questions, of course, I'm there, the, is that if we go down the course of making the installation, and it doesn't quite get there in time, you know, we can certainly try and create a, you know, create this to start for, you know, 2020, you know, 2023, and do our best to lay the power in, and just the rink might get postponed, and that's something that at least we know would be there next year, and we could, you know, have, go through the work and have it be there, and we'd make the same commitments that we've, you know, that we've done, so. I don't know if I should have had much more to add than that.
Questions for Mr. Witz. Commissioner, anything?
So we've heard tonight some issues with this location, and, you know, people have public comment, and also at various places before, including the Parks and Rec Board, have talked about other locations. And I don't know, if you've said this before in the last, I can't remember, locating it on a shut-down Third Street or shut-down Troy Street in front of City Hall is...
It doesn't fit. We did the analysis on it. It doesn't fit for this size rink. I mean, we could certainly go back and look at, you know, something, something smaller, you know, a different size. That specific footprint doesn't work with the, with, and I, I don't think that's, you know, I don't think that's necessarily, you know, an idea that, you know, could, you know, I think that's something that we wouldn't oppose as having be part of the festival to have on Third Street or Williams or something along those lines. It's just the size rink that we have does not work with the equipment, the sidewalks, the poles. We analyzed it thoroughly. We also analyzed the side parking lot of City Hall over this way as well, and it's just something that couldn't, couldn't go there. But we could go back to the drawing board with a smaller rink, you know, for the, for the future.
Thank you.
Quick question. If we were to bring in a generator, what would the kilowatt capacity be? Would it be 1,000 kilowatt, 2,000 kilowatt?
I don't know the exact of that, but, but I do know that, you know, again, that's not our favorite thing to do either, and, you know, we would put it, can certainly put it as far away from Henry Ford, and, you know, and, you know, I think in the open air, it would be okay in the same way it was running the entire time during the farmer's market, and there was no issue with anything going into the farmer's market during sessions of vendors and so forth. There was, you know, it would go straight up, or, you know, it's not our favorite, you know, it's not our favorite, you know, situation to do that, so.
Any other questions? Anything to add, Mr. Witz?
No.
All right, so I, going back to what Commissioner Douglas was saying, you know, there are really three elements that we required the last time we talked about this, and I think two of those have been sufficiently covered. I take Mr. Witz at his word that if he's covering it, or if somebody else is covering, that we'll get that sponsorship money in. So now we have maybe two to three more other issues. We have costs, we have revenues, and we have the whole electrical situation. Costs and revenue, we don't have a full picture of the costs, but I think we certainly have a better picture of the revenue. So, I feel like, you know, just hearing what Mr. Witz just said about, you know, the prediction we had for a year, and another location doing that in a week, you know, that shows even if we did a fraction of it, that's a lot of upside to cover, whatever operating expenses are. But we don't know what astronomical means. We have some logistical issues, and we have some aesthetic issues. And I don't know that we vetted out all the options. Can you bury these underground? What does that cost? Can you make a little hole in the ground? And, you know, can you, is there other technology out there, you know, that can do this? I don't, I don't know. We've heard from DTE, we've heard from a few contractors, but we haven't heard from the ice rink experts when it comes to, you know, maybe there's other ice rinks that have, you know, lower draw than the 6,000 to, you know, or 600 to 2,000 kilowatt that they need to produce. Don't know. But, I don't know. I guess I'd like to hear from my colleagues, because I think the merits of it, I think the commission was very clear, I know Commissioner Prush was out, but, you know, an ice rink in the downtown is a great idea. It's great for a whole lot of reasons that we, you know, brought up. We also expressed some challenges that this was kind of, you know, didn't get the traction it probably should have got maybe earlier in the year. And we, you know, we left in an awkward predicament of doing a conditional approval and going to the DDA, and that's not an ideal situation. But, you know, to the extent that we can make it happen, to the extent that we can take some risk, to the extent that maybe we don't get transformers, and it's a done, you know, not going to happen, but there's a couple other things that we have to solve ahead of this as well. So, need to know what your thoughts are. We'll start with Commissioner Dubb.
Well, I'm trying to keep my cool, but I'm incredibly frustrated that it has been clear from the initial report, the fact that it was brought to us the day before a decision had to be made, that staff is actively advocating against this. Disagreement's one thing, resistance is another thing, but putting an image of a power station in the middle of the Field of Honor is outright sabotage. And it feels deliberate and contrite, and I feel like this report is trying to force us into a point where there are no options forward. There are no ways forward, and I've never been so frustrated at this table. So I say I think it's DOA, because clearly, in the face of such resistance, we're just never going to be able to get done. It doesn't matter if six of us want it, doesn't matter how bad we want it. The staff has made it clear it's not going to happen.
Commissioner Prush?
I wasn't here at the last meeting, and everyone knows that I didn't get a chance to vote on it, but you all heard my very strong feelings about how I thought this was a big mistake. That because of the design of the park, and the effort that went into the design of the park, and the feelings of the park design people, the task force, that putting an ice rink in this location irrespective of the whole electrical issue was not an appropriate thing, because it was connected to, not so much brought forward like through the Parks and Rec Board or through the Parks Task Force as an amenity that the public wanted. It was brought forth because it was part of a festival, and we had argued very vociferously in the task force that the use of the park amenities specifically in the design specifically for festivals was not why we were designing it the way it was. Not that it would never have been used for that, but that's not how the basis for these designs. But when the motion was passed two weeks ago, I thought, okay, you know, the direction of the city commission is this is going to go forward, so my viewpoint is, okay, it's done, so then let's make this work the best way possible. But I've heard a couple of different things since then, which makes me realize that this is not a good idea. First of all, we all received a memo from our city attorney indicating the difficulties in the negotiations of the specific terms of the agreement with Mr. Witz. And we're not going to talk about those here in a public meeting, because we're not going to negotiate in public, and we're not going to talk about private negotiations here. But it made it very clear that Mr. Lueal was very frustrated with the way the negotiations were going, and that there were some issues that he didn't think could be successfully resolved in the benefit of the residents and the taxpayers and the city commission, based upon the representations that he was hearing from Mr. Witz. Those might be resolvable in the future, but I'm skeptical that they can be. The second thing is, the location of this, this all came about really quickly. The city commission made a decision two weeks ago, based upon the information you had at hand, and without really understanding the specifics here, and without really giving the staff an opportunity to put the stuff, these specifics together. They weren't asked before you voted, you know, technically, where, how is this going to work? Where is this equipment going to go? How much is going to be needed? What is the cost? You didn't answer that information before you voted on this, and you voted to move forward with an agreement. And now, all of a sudden, you've got all this information saying, look, this is how, this is how complicated it's going to be, and this is how much it's going to cost, and it's going to be pretty darn expensive, and it could impact the budget, and it might cost, you know, significant changes to the way we do contracts. And, and guess what? You know, I think we kind of went into it with rose-colored glasses, and all of a sudden now, you know, the reality is biting us. I think if we were to, I think that residents would be furious if we put a substation, which is what this would be, in the middle of the park. I don't think you're going to be successfully screen it, or the Arts Commission would, could successfully create art around it so that, oh my gosh, we really don't know what's there. I mean, not in that location. It's just not going to happen. So, I strongly disagree that this is, you know, some kind of staff sabotage. I think they're finally in a position to present you the facts that we all should have had two weeks ago before we rushed into this decision. And now we've got it in front of us, and it's like, oh my gosh, it's not as, it's not as doable as we thought. So, and there's no way that we could, and I strongly disagree with Commissioner Colo, that since we're already down this road, we can't stop. I mean, you made a motion to negotiate an agreement. We could just as easily say, based upon the facts that we have in front of us, we want the negotiations to stop, and there's not going to be an agreement for this ice rink this year. That doesn't mean it can't happen in the future, and that doesn't mean that we don't like ice rinks. It would be wonderful, I think, if we could make this happen. I think an ice rink in the downtown would be terrific, but not, not with the facts we have in front of us tonight. Not at all. So, that, you ask for opinions, that's how I feel.
I'll just point out, it was four weeks ago.
Yeah.
Four weeks ago. It's, you know, Cola, my mind is all blurry.
Commissioner Colo?
So Commissioner Dubb's more eloquently stated what I was thinking about 15 minutes ago, but I do agree with him that, you know, this is, it's, we've made a decision, and now it feels like people are actually working against it. We've had, you know, support from the DDA, where we had five members, which was unanimous that night, vote to approve this. We've heard from the Restaurant Association, we've heard from downtown retailers, we've heard from residents, that this is amenity that they want. So I hope that the next steps here is that staff can come back and look at this, at how we can accomplish the goals that we're seeking. You know, we're seeking to get power into this park. So, you know, there, you know, there's, I'm looking at a picture of this park before it was, you know, 100% complete here. There is a triangle right on the other side of that. There, you can see the bladed grass here, just to the north, in front of like the library, the bench that's in front of the library. That's an area, maybe it could be hidden, but I think the next steps I'm looking for is a way to make this work. Instead of telling us, if you're here why it can't work, how can it work? What are those steps? What are those costs? And then we can make an informed decision about the cost. But, you know, we're hearing a lot of colloquios, a lot of what ifs. Maybe, I would like to see some true cost estimates as to what this will cost, what the different options are, because I think that's, that's really what we're looking for, is to solve a problem.
Commissioner Dubb?
I guess I just want to say, you know, I respect Commissioner Prush's leadership on the task force. I served on the task force as well, though, and I completely disagree with the characterization that we made a sort of guarantee that we would not activate the park in this kind of way. Commissioner Colo brought forward at our meeting four weeks ago, renderings of an ice rink in this very location, which I know that we enthusiastically discussed is a wonderful way to activate the park in the winter time. And also characterizing these several months of having the ice rink there as a festival is inaccurate. The festival's a few days, the rink would be there a few months. The idea, for me, that for a third of the year, we should leave the park inactive to save some sod is comical. And I remain frustrated that, yeah, there's a lot we don't know, even though this was brought to staff in the spring. And the report and recommendation, fiery anti-recommendation, without any actual, you know, pathway forward, was brought to us the day before a decision had to be made. We didn't rush this decision. It was forced upon us to be rushed by design, and that's, that's why we're in the difficult position we're in now. So, I'm not, unlike Commissioner Colo, I'm not willing to fight this uphill battle. I think it's disappointing that we're in this situation, but clearly, this is not going anywhere.
Yeah, I'll just add, I don't even know what position we're in, because four weeks ago, you know, we came up with something. I guess what I was expecting... I, I guess what I was expecting tonight was something more than why we can't do that, more than just why we can't do it. But here are three or four different alternatives. If we were to move forward with the rink, alternative one, here's the option, you know, here's the risk, there's timing delays if these timing issues happen, blah, blah, here's the cost. We can define what astronomical means, you know what I mean? Astronomical is a scary word. We can use words like significantly more, we can use, but that word astronomical is a word we use to write things off, okay? That's just, you know, psychological things humans do. So, you know, to understand, okay, option one is risky. Option two, we can use a diesel generator, this is where we would put it, this is how much it would cost, all of this. Option three, we can relocate the rinks a little differently, we can shrink the size of it, we can do these sort of things, but just have a menu of options that, you know, would allow us to actually choose one of them. Right now, I just have this explanation of, you know, oh, we can't do it, here's a visual, maybe you can move these things over here, maybe you could, you know, and if you don't like, you know, we've tried to reduce the, the optics on it and so that's the best we could do, but if, if, you know, that's not good enough for you, here's an alternative, you know? And I don't feel that we have that. And, you know, for us, this was a pretty important element, especially with some of the other challenges we've endured in the downtown, to have, you know, this rink here to bring people back and to enjoy the winter and, you know, probably expecting another wave of COVID, an outdoor recreation. And I just feel like this is something that, you know, and I get staff may not be on board with it because it's work, there's effort, there's negotiations, there's things like that, but we need to be open about that and say we don't recommend it because we have these issues. But I do feel like, you know, I, I'll tell you, just be open, the sentiment that I'm getting is that, you know, if, like, you guys aren't on board with it and, you know, there's going to be no creativity, innovation, it's going to be, hey, how do we present something in the, you know, worst, not worst possible light, but like, you know, there's definitely no motivation for imagination, I see coming out of this. But, you know, I guess that's my point.
May I respond?
Yes.
So, this is a point in time. My hope was that I would have much more concrete information from the contractors and made it known to them that we walked the site. We're going to continue to work on this until someone tells me to stop. So the presentation that I made at the DDA Board, I advocated to the group, and there was some reservations about this, and said, we, we're going to make this work. So I just want to be clear as far as the, the recommendation on this. What, what concerns me, it's not a case of not doing it, but I just want to give you realistic expectation, can we have the electricity in place in the time of this event? And, and I can't say a hundred percent. But we will continue to work with the contractor. I've already asked Mr. Filipski, he's been in contact with MKSK. I mentioned it briefly, but I probably didn't emphasize enough that, that yes, we need to look at the, the creativity of the designers, that there's ways that we can screen this so we can minimize the, the impact. So, and if there is also a way through the professionals that, that we can, you know, as Commissioner Cola suggests, that, that there's a portion of it that's screened behind the, the bench. Absolutely, that, and there's different ways that we can go about this. But I, I wanted to give you kind of a point in time, this is where we're at. And we will continue to, to work forward and I hope at the, at the September meeting that, that we would have all the information, all the, the questions answered and to, you know, to, to continue to, to move this forward.
Have you guys had a conversation with the ice rink manufacturer or?
I haven't because that is, that's coming from the promoter. So he's the one that, that has the, the contacts, so.
What I would suggest is, you know, maybe save you a little bit of time if you're going to continue to work on it. I'm sure they've seen this problem pop up before and they might have some solutions, ideas, even if we swap out a rink for something, it costs a little bit more for the rink, but it's one of these, you know, you know, highly efficient rinks and we pay a little bit more on the rink to rent it. But, you know, there, there's got to be some alternatives out there that, they, they've endured this situation before, I guarantee it, and they might have some recommendations for us.
Commissioner Douglas?
I have a question for Mr. Filipski, or a package of questions, let's say. Oh, we have a Parks and Rec master plan right now. Does that master plan forecast or did the research that went into it indicate a demand for an outdoor seasonal ice rink in Royal Oak?
No, not anything that would indicate specifically.
Although we haven't seen the full summarized results from where they're at yet.
Not in the existing five-year plan.
Oh. No, I, I read that document actually a couple of times. I don't recall, that's jumping out. That's not to say that it wasn't in there or it wasn't, but it wasn't a high level theme, I would say.
So, and then my second question is, you're, you're in the process of gathering data for the next iteration of that plan. Are you seeing demand or, you know, even anecdotally, people saying, gosh, we really want an outdoor ice rink in the winter?
Not specifically, but here again, they're still compiling all of their information. We haven't seen it yet.
All right, so I, I won't base any decisions on the data being collected for the next round of the plan, but the existing master plan doesn't talk, I mean, there is, the people of Royal Oak are not clamoring for an outdoor ice or seasonal outdoor ice rink. Now, maybe it would be nice, it doesn't have to be downtown, it could be in Grant Park, it could be, I mean, it could be anywhere in the city if we wanted to have an outdoor ice rink. But, I mean, I really feel like the tail is wagging the dog here. This is, of, of all of the things that are, are, you know, citizens want and demand of us, as we've learned in the development of our, the current Parks and Rec Master Plan, there are things that people want more than this. This is not bubbled to the top as a priority. So if we're a policymaking body, what we're, I mean, the, the insistence on putting this park into Centennial Commons in 2022, 23 is not, is not dictated by our existing plans.
And that's a, that's a fair point, but I would also argue, I wouldn't even think of an ice skating rink necessarily as a Parks and Recreation, more as a entertainment element. Even though you could fit it into both, I mean, I wouldn't be thinking of it.
Yeah, okay.
You know, but I would definitely, I mean, and I think our success last year with the temporary structure in the farmer's market parking lot is testament that people do love it and would clamor for it. And, you know, especially to have that experience in a beautiful, safe, vibrant downtown, I think people are longing for that sort of, you know, connectivity with the community, which we all saw when it was in the farmer's market. So maybe part of that to look into is, did people truly think of an ice rink as, you know, maybe they think of like the ice arena, maybe, but this, maybe they think of this more casually like entertainment in a way.
Commissioner Macy?
So first of all, I think there are more people clamoring for an ice rink than for bird scooters, so just for what? Yeah, I feel like we did. So, and I, I actually think that, I mean, it's, when you were saying this, I was like, you know what? Nobody's thinking about the winter right now. Like nobody, I wonder if we were to, we're not going to have any Parks and Rec Master Plan questionnaires in the season when people might be thinking like, oh, what should we be doing right now? Right now, people are talking about things that we can do outdoors and play basketball and things like that, but that's really neither here nor there. So, I mean, I think I share generally the sentiment of this table that, you know, having asked for this to, for this to move forward and to give it a try, I was hoping to see some options. But I also see Commissioner Purush's point that I think they did present an option and, you know, there's discussion about whether or not it was made, made to appear in such a manner that we would definitely have to reject it. But it, I think we have to deal with the possibility that this is the option, like what if, this is one of the options and maybe the question before us now is, would this be acceptable to us if we had to pay $130,000 more and we were to put a 15 by 20 enclosure in that poor part of the park, which Mr. Witz said is probably the right spot? Like, I mean, maybe we can think of other places, but we're not engineers either and it seems like the, both of the people they talked to think that is the right spot. So, I, I mean, I think, I, I agree that we've been presented with something that is very unappealing and I hope that what we're sending back to staff is, like, this, we hope you can make it look a lot better than this or, or give us something else different. And like I, the question I had for Mr. Witz, it seems like people would be a lot more interested in this on these other positions and it maybe doesn't work and so that is not a possibility, but we haven't even seen that really. Like, oh, a rink this size doesn't fit there, but if this is going to be a no-go, I mean, we're now talking about diesel generators and a permanent structure on our lawn that, I mean, it, it's not great. This is not great. So it just seems like we need to be really broadening what we're looking at for this in order to really maximize what we can get out of it. I feel like we're maybe clinging to a solution that is, continues to throw up obstacles and maybe that's the fault of the people who are not interested in really having it to begin with, but maybe not. Maybe this is the, this is the real answer to this particular question and we need to look elsewhere as we try to get through this.
And I think Commissioner Macy's right and I think that, I mean, funny story, was it you, Commissioner Dubb? When we were building this building, they had a whole, all the transformers and everything like located right in Centennial Commons.
It was right there.
And we were like, what in the hell is that? That's not staying there. The city manager at the time said, it's temporary and they moved the damn thing. And so you might even have been part of the moving on that by the time you came on board. Because we were like, so these things, there is, there are solutions out there. I mean, we're going to be putting in the, the restroom, right? We're going to put a building in there, you know, maybe some of this equipment goes behind the washroom in the design. And maybe the rink has to reorient or move a little bit differently and those trade-offs are worth it, you know what I mean? So there's some imagination that we really need to, you know, play, not just to say, okay, here's a presentation, here's the rink, here's the power, yes or no? I mean, if we have imagination and, I mean, we gotta solve the problem. I'm convinced we have really, really smart people. And we also have DTE that is, you know, I, in my opinion, they're super conservative and super don't want to spend time thinking about these things. They don't care because it's not in their business, they're a regulated monopoly, right? So they're just like, no, transformer, that's it, so we gotta do. You know, but getting that professional engineering, you know, consultation, talking to the suppliers of these ice rinks to understand, you know, are there alternatives and other solutions, I think is a good checkpoint. At this point, I mean, I guess what's the, I mean, the temperature I hear right now is like, that'd probably be a little bit of an issue, you know, with the big area there. I'm also hearing that we don't want to give up on this idea, at least from a majority of us. So what are the constraints that we're faced with right now as far as timing? Do we have a couple of weeks to circle back to our next meeting?
We can. I'm thinking you're going to have a much better solution if we focused on 2023 and to, to look at a, a smart arrangement and to get the engineers involved. And again, it's not a case of being against the, the rink, but let's come up with a smart solution. And if we can come up with a, a temporary for the, the rink, maybe we revert back to the farmer's market. I don't know that, but, but.
Or Troy Street, something smaller, Troy Street.
Correct, correct. And so there, there has been this commitment to put in a rink unwavering. You're hearing this from me to all of you. And I want to come up with a good solution, but I can tell you, I don't like where we're at. I didn't like the answers that I was heard, but there's some things that we can't control. Supply chain issues impacts us in so many different areas of the operations. And we could wish it to, to go away and, and work harder, that isn't going to cut it. We need the equipment to, to show up, but we need a better arrangement that we can look at it and go, that's the solution. I'm not saying, and, and this was not intended to approve or deny, I'm not making a recommendation to you. As I said before, I'm touching base with you. This is where I'm at, this is the information that I have. And so, but given the dialogue, have, you know, pretty good description, I certainly know what you don't like, but I also want to come up with a, a good solution that, that we can be happy with and that will be something 10 years from now that we say, you know what? That was a smart decision, so.
Okay. All right, so no action on this one, more of an update?
Yes, but we'll be bringing that back up.
We've got some feedback to you.
Yes, yeah, that part was helpful and so thank you for the.
Painful but helpful.
And candid feedback, thank you, yes.
All right, it's 11:15 at night, notwithstanding anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy, discussion. Let's not fall for the vote. All who agree say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, motion passes, adjourned.